Can everyone take their seats? I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you for your cooperation. Okay, call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Commissioner Lama.
Here.
Commissioner Robinovich.
Here.
Commissioner Stuvasant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Riscara.
Here.
Mayor Goldman.
Here.
All members present.
Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like Maggie Gordo to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation. Father Flanagan.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor and all city officials. Everybody here, let us pray. Dear wise and loving Father, first, let us say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health. We need to fulfill our callings, the sustenance and our friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, Senator Goldman, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. We ask that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Peace in their lives and joy in their task. Let us pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit them, those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Sunny Isles Beach. It is in your most blessed name that we pray. Amen. Good evening.
Thank you. Now for our opening statement. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and thank you for being here tonight. Please turn off or mute any electronic devices to avoid interrupting these proceedings. In all issues that may become before the City Commission, we ask that everyone show mutual respect for one another by listening quietly to each person speaking and that everyone refrain from any clapping, heckling, or verbal outbursts in favor or in opposition to a speaker. Individuals that do not adhere to Chapter 74 Rules of Procedure of the Code, particularly Section 74-21 decorum, shall be barred from further appearance before the Commission. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to one three-minute comment per item. If you exceed the three-minute allotment, the chair will advise you to finish your comment. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or you don't see speaking after one warning, you will be escorted out of the chambers. Is the approval of the minutes?
Yes, Mayor, we can take the next three, which is, all three of them are approval of minutes, which is for the Special City Commission meeting on November 22nd, the regular City Commission meeting on November 30th, and the Special City Commission meeting on December 6th.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along, the order of business. There have been changes to tonight's agenda as follows. The following are add-ons. Item 12B, Discussion Re-Advisory Committees. Item 12C, Discussion Re-Space Needs Assessment. Item 12D, Discussion Re-And Ordinance-Banning Balloon Releases. Item 12E, Discussion Re-Crosswalk at 189th Street and Collins Avenue. And Item 12F, Discussion Re-Proactive Community Policing. Item 10J is deferred. That's Resolution Re-Zoning in Progress. Do I hear a motion to accept the changes to the agenda?
Mayor, I have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
If we could put on for 12G Navarro Sale.
Yes.
It'll be very brief.
12G.
Navarro Sale.
Navarro Sale. Okay. Motion? All in favor? Okay. Now for special presentations.
Yes, ma'am. That's Commissioner Robinovich.
During National Impaired Driving Prevention Month, we reaffirm our commitment to prevent impaired driving. We remember the victims and honor the memory of those whose lives have been taken or altered at the hands of those driving under the influence. By bringing attention to the importance of this month, we're raising awareness and reminding our neighbors today about the responsibility we all have to each other to drive sober for everyone's safety. On September 18, 2019, tragedy struck our Sunny Isles Beach community. While Maria Romero, a Sunny Isles Beach resident and a mother of three, was driving on 995 with her 15-year-old son, Joel Joey Romero, a woman driving while impaired rammed into their car and forever changed their lives. This proclamation is made today in honor of Joel Joey Romero, who was killed shortly after impact. Joel left behind his mother Maria, who survived the crash after a month-long coma, along with his father Joel and his siblings Matthew and Luna. No family should ever have to endure the pain and suffering they have experienced. Today, we join Joel's mother and their family in cherishing their memory of their loved one while bringing light to their case in the hopes that we can help prevent others from the consequences of driving under the influence of drugs or alcohol. To the Romero family, we honor and we remember Joel Joey. And we stand with you, committed to do everything in our power to prevent impaired driving. Today and throughout the month of December, we remember the victims of impaired driving and we stand united in our resolve to never drive under the influence. I hope you will join me in a brief moment of silence as we reflect upon our individual and collective responsibility to stop impaired driving in its tracks. I'm now going to ask our city clerk to read out loud the proclamation and for my fellow government elected officials to join me in presenting it to the Romero family.
Okay, the proclamation reads, "Whereas the use of alcohol and other drugs, including over-the-counter and prescription medication, can affect the brain by impairing motor skills, reaction time, and judgment, all of which are critical while driving. And whereas impaired driving as a public health concern is a public health concern because not only does it put the driver at risk, but also endangers the lives and safety of passengers and others sharing the road. And whereas according to the Department of Florida Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles, of all the fatal crashes that occurred in the state of Florida in 2020, 32.8% involved alcohol, drugs, or both. And whereas through the exercise of good judgment, personal responsibility, and the commitment to never drive while under the influence of alcohol, every community member can play a role in the fight against impaired driving due to drunk, drugged, or distracted driving. And whereas this month, which is considered nationally as one of the deadliest and most dangerous times on American roadways due to an increase in impaired driving, we must all recognize the danger impaired driving can pose for drivers, passengers, pedestrians, and all others sharing the road. And encourage residents and visitors of the city of Sunny Isles Beach to identify, develop, and promote solutions to this critical issue that takes away thousands of lives every year. Now therefore do I, Dana Robin Goldman, as mayor and on behalf of the City Commission of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, hereby designate December 2021 as Impaired Driving Prevention Month in the city of Sunny Isles Beach." And the proclamation is on the podium, whenever you guys go down for the picture.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Robinovich. Thank you. Are we presenting or how are we?
Yeah, she is. Yeah, let's.
Item 5B, City Manager's Award Presented to Law Enforcement Personnel. One that's quite close. Hits about as home as you can get.
Thank you, Mayor. Normally, I don't like to read things, but I think this was important enough that I wrote something to make sure that I didn't mess it up. So, you know, across the country, there's a lot of negativity and false narrative regarding the police department. But that's not the case here in Sunny Isles Beach. We have the best of the best. We hire quality officers of character. The mayor and commissioners have directed me to find more officers like those that are being honored here tonight. They've explained their care and concern for our officers, including directing a feasibility study that will explore the options of a new or expanded police department, new equipment, the latest technology, the best of the best for the best of the best. While other cities are defunding the police, we are supporting our police department. We're adding officers. We're helping our police department any way that we can. I've worked alongside the men and women of the police department for the past nine years, and I'm proud to be associated with them. They are dedicated, professional, they care about our community, and they save lives. These three officers in particular that we're honoring tonight exemplify our city and what we're looking for. In thinking through who to give the inaugural City Manager's Award to, I never considered that it would be for saving someone's life. But that's exactly what these three did. Because of them and them alone during this holiday season, someone will be celebrating life, not loss. And for me, that deserves the highest recognition. What is unique about this award is that the person whose life was saved is here tonight, and he is our honorable mayor's husband. And I've asked him to help me present the award this evening. Due to their direct lifesaving action, I am giving the prestigious City Manager's Achievement Award to Officer Mark Quinlan, Sergeant Brian Snow, and Sergeant Javier Estevez. So if they'd come up, we'd like to present them. We would.
Okay. Thank you again. Onto item six, zoning. Ladies and gentlemen, this evening's agenda has two zoning applications. In these matters, the commission sits in a quasi-judicial capacity. The decision of whether or not to approve a zoning variance is not a popularity contest, but must be based upon substantial competent evidence as it is presented tonight. If you intend to provide testimony on any zoning application, you must be sworn in by the city clerk, and you should also fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. We will first hear from city staff and then from the applicant. After this, I will allow anyone from the audience who has been sworn in to provide testimony. The zoning applicant has the right to cross-examine any witness and for rebuttal. Please make your comments concisely. Mr. City Clerk, please read your introductory zoning statement.
In accordance with the LDRs of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, all items to be heard today have been legally advertised, and the newspaper notices have been mailed and posted on the property. Everyone that is going to be speaking, please raise your right arm. That includes the applicants for both applications, both items. Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Mayor, before we continue, this is for item 6A, which is the variance application for the property located at 224 Atlantic Avenue. The applicant's name is SG Properties 2416 LLC. And are there any ex parte communications?
Yes.
Mayor, anyone else? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. This application is for property located at 224 Atlantic Avenue. The applicant is SG Properties 2416 LLC. The applicant has submitted a request for a variance to decrease the minimum lot width requirements of two proposed parcels of land located at the mentioned property. Specifically, the applicant is seeking lot width for the proposed parcel one to the west to be 69.07 feet wide, and for the proposed parcel two east to be 60 feet wide, where the minimum lot width is 75 feet per residential lot. Additionally, the applicant is seeking a preliminary subdivision plot subsequent to the variance approval. They subdivide one conforming and existing parcel of land, the parent tract, into two subdivided non-conforming lots as described. As a little explanation of background, Atlantic Avenue is one of the islands with a residential zoning description. We have other areas within the city with the same zoning district. And based in our review and our consultants' review, this application is consistent with our city's comprehensive plan and is not consistent with our city land development regulations. The applicant has assented that the application and the variance request will not negatively impact the adjacent properties and has obtained letters of no objections from certain residents within the island. The letters are within your application at this moment. However, as I mentioned, this request does not, it is not consistent with our land development regulations. With that stated, our code state and the purpose is to curtail nonconformity and to bring about their eventual improvements or eliminations. So with that said, the applicant representative will continue with the presentation.
Good evening. For the record, Javier Avino with Law Offices of 1450 Brooklyn Avenue with the law firm of Bills and Sumberg, here on behalf of the owners and applicant, the Borda family. I'm joined by Mr. and Mrs. Borda, as well as their two daughters here today. As Claudia indicated, this is a request for a variance to allow for a relaxation of the lot width. That said, the requirements of the underlying code are for a 75-foot frontage by 100. That's the contemplated lot size. These lots, even though they would not meet the minimum lot width, they would exceed the 7,500 square foot minimum lot size. And I want to go, the reason I have this board up in front is because the underlying island was platted, it's currently platted, in its existing condition is in 30-foot frontages. So when you look at the overwhelming majority of the properties on the island, most of them consist of two or three existing platted lots, which leaves you with a typical 60 to 90 ranging in lot frontage. And so... We went ahead and did a survey of the entire island with the frontages, and there's a couple of things that we wanted to disclose to the board. There's only four of the 60 properties on the island that actually have a lot size that is greater than the existing lot in its existing condition. In addition, everything in green that you see has a lot width that is at or less than the proposed lot widths of the proposed lots after subdivision into two. The existing property consists of four and a half platted lots. So what we are proposing, that's how you get to a 60-foot frontage for one, as Claudia said, and a 69 for the other. As Claudia also indicated, we went ahead and reached out to as many neighbors as we could within, and we also, and I'll submit for the record as well, the petitions that we obtained of support for this application, including notably the two abutting properties that would be arguably most impacted by any subdivision of this proposed property. The purpose behind your land development regulations is to create minimum standards. When the 75 by 100-foot and 7,500 square foot lot size was proposed, the thought process behind it was to create normalcy and to create a certain standard across, but what wasn't really taken into account was the island's unique condition and underlying platted circumstance. And so everything that you see in green not only is at or less than the proposed lots, but also doesn't, none of those properties conform to your existing code today either. So that's the existing condition. I think that's really important to continue to restate because that context is important. And the context of a neighborhood is what really should be evaluated when looking at a variance. We believe we meet the criteria. We have articulated that in our letter of intent and supporting materials. So we believe we meet the criteria for a variance, and we think in addition to meeting the criteria, we believe that the intent of a variance is to look at this particular situation and decide when is it appropriate to vary from your standard regulations. When you have the vast majority of the properties on this island at or below that frontage, it begs the question, what is the actual minimum standard as it pertains here? I would argue to you all that this island and the vast majority of the properties here, as shown on the exhibit, show that the 60-foot frontage that we're proposing for lot one and the 69.1 that we're proposing for lot two are more than in keeping with what are more than in keeping with what the context of the neighborhood have. As I said, and I'll submit for the record, we not only have this exhibit that already was submitted, but we have the petitions that were also submitted with corresponding locations of the various folks and neighbors that support this application, including, as I mentioned, the two abutting properties. We respectfully request any time for rebuttal if necessary. And with that, I am happy to address any questions that you all may have and available to answer any questions. Submit this. Yes?
For a variance, aren't there six for a variance? I mean, aren't there six established criteria?
Seven.
Seven, there are seven. So can you identify how it meets all seven criteria for a variance?
Sure. So... The seven criteria include special conditions or circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land. As I indicated, you have original platted lots that have 30-foot frontages. That was the original intent of the plat and of this property. That's peculiar. It's not a new condition. This isn't a new lot or unplatted land, which would be where your 75 by 100 standard typically arises. Those special conditions and criteria too is those special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the petitioner. We didn't create the underlying plat. We didn't create the underlying platted conditions. Literal interpretations of the LDRs deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by others. As this exhibit indicates, the vast majority of others on our island enjoy the same exact requests that we're making here. The alleged hardship is not economic and not deliberately created, which, again, same exact arguments. It's not an economic, it's a contextual and planning exercise. Granting the variance request that conveys the same treatment to the individual owner as the owners of the other lands, again, as we have, I think, articulated and demonstrated by the exhibit, the other owners of land in this island have that same condition. The variance granted makes possible the reasonable use of the land building or structure. We believe that two single-family homes here is appropriate. And again, in context with the neighborhood, as Claudia also articulated...
So the intent is to put two single-family homes?
Correct.
Okay.
The intent is two single-family homes, which, as Claudia indicated, is permitted through the LDRs and through the comprehensive plan. And the last criteria is the grant of the variance is in harmony with the general intent and purpose, is not interest to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public safety. And we believe it is not either. I'm happy to address any other questions. I mean, I think, Mayor, if I may, again, the reason that this board... And that we surveyed the entire island is because I think visually what you'll see is that what is not in harmony and what is not in context is the LDRs as applied to the island. I think the LDRs, as applied generally and as applied to perhaps other neighborhoods and other R1 zones, is perfectly appropriate. But I think when you view it in context...
So we should just throw out the LDRs?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not, but that's what provides a variance process so that it could be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. It's absolutely not to be thrown out and not to be taken lightly, but it's to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis to determine when is it appropriate to do it and when it's not appropriate to do it. And I think...
And the hardship aspect, or there's no... Okay. That's okay, continue on, continue on.
I'm happy to address any other questions. I don't have any other materials to present to you at this time, but I respectfully regret...
The idea is to split the two lots and build two homes, basically?
It's to split the four lots. Remember, there are four and a half lots, actually.
It's going to be like a subdivision, so ultimately two lots?
It'll ultimately be two. It'll ultimately be two homes? Correct. And so the two homes would be similar to, let's say, this home and this home, or this home and this home. That's the, that is the intent, yes. Two single-family homes versus one, you know, large home. And I will say, Mayor, that obviously the homes that are proposed must meet the criteria of the underlying LDRs, which is important to note as well. So the underlying homes, in spite of being, you know, now two homes, you still need to meet all the criteria, including, you know, maximum sizes and setbacks, et cetera. So they would comply.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Alex Lama. Do you know what the frontage is of the two homes abutting, the property we're talking about?
Yes. Give me one second. 74.9 on one side, and the other side? 108.
108, okay. And when you say that the planning was supposed to be, the plots were 30-foot frontage, and you're looking at properties that have three or four plots of 30-foot each? When was it platted? Do we know that?
Yes.
I think that was... Yeah.
The underlying plat...
The year, yeah. I just want to get some historical...
Claudia's saying in the 20s.
In the 20s, okay.
Correct.
All right. And you had mentioned, just to clarify, because I'm reading the report from our staff.
Yes.
It says that it is within the details of the comprehensive plan, but not the LDRs. But you did mention that it was within, it was permitted by our LDRs. So I just want a clarification on that.
No, what...
Are we within...
It's not permitted, or zoning codes...
No, because he had mentioned that the LDRs did permit. I just want to know if it was just a mistake?
No, no, let me attempt to clarify. So I think what I tried to articulate was that the proposed homes after would meet all the other regulations of the LDRs, absent lot frontage. So we, again, far...
Absent lot frontage.
Absent lot frontage, which is the variance request that's before you. We far exceed minimum lot size, which is 7,500 square feet. The proposed lots would be 11,102 and 9,543 square feet respectively. So each lot would far exceed the minimum 7,500 square foot size. They're just configured differently.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
In the waterway, there is a small parcel, right? A little island. And it's only for parcel number one?
Correct.
But it's in front of parcel number two?
No, it will only be affiliated with the parcel that it's in front of.
No, I understand. But it's going to be in front part of it, the east part, it's going to be in front of parcel number two?
A portion of it, yes, but it's only... If you can see here on the proposed plat... Yes, you're correct that a portion of it is in front.
Okay.
But the access to it is strictly from one of the lots.
Only for one?
And will only belong to one of the lots. And the square footage that I just provided did not include that island as well. So that island is an additional 3,117 square feet.
To parcel one?
To parcel one, correct.
I also have a question.
Yes.
And I appreciate Commissioner Lama's question regarding when this was done because I was thinking we need a little history lesson. I understand that while your graph, the other graph, was very compelling, right? Shows us all the green squares and whatever. I understand that a lot of those were grandfathered in. And so those smaller lots were existing when our current regulations were created. So can Claudia, or can you or Claudia confirm whether that's the case?
It's up to you. So, yes, when the code was adopted, what happened was that all the lots that didn't meet it became legal nonconforming lots. But yes, they're assembled, as you're seeing here. So several of them were already assembled with two lots. Some were assembled with three or more. Some of the larger parcels that you see at the end of the island were actually platted as larger lots to begin with. So yes, those lots, upon the adoption of the city's code, they became legal nonconforming lots.
Right. So you understand that we have to draw the line somewhere?
Oh, absolutely.
And what I feel you're asking us to do is to erase the line and to reconsider, you know, on a case-by-case basis, but basically take what is conforming under the regulations that were passed after, you know, those particular lots were already functioning, you know, for lack of a better word. And you're now asking us to take one conforming piece of land and make it nonconforming when it's not grandfathered in, like the other lots that you're comparing it to. And so my rhetorical question would be then, what's the point of having a code at all if we're going to just ignore it? When the purpose of it is to attempt to regulate to the extent that we can, because some of it was already existing. We can only, right? We have to have a starting point from somewhere. So what would be your response to that? Why doesn't it make sense to throw away our code?
Well, I don't feel you're throwing away your code. I actually think you're adopting your code. You're adopting the process. If we were throwing it away, we would be approving this without any process whatsoever. We're actually coming before you,
Right.
asking you to review this from a context standpoint. These properties will never conform, the ones in green. They will never be 75 by 100 square feet, 75 by 100 lots. That'll never be the existing condition of this island. So what I think is unique here, as opposed to throwing away the code, as you say, I 100% don't think you should throw away the code.
Okay.
And I 100% think that what you should do is apply the code as you are applying it and allow for the variance process to allow you the opportunity to evaluate it and to interpret it from a context standpoint. Because many times, you may find that it's not appropriate to do it. If the vast majority of these properties were 75 by 100, as your code contemplates in a one-size-fits-all fashion, and unfortunately, that's not reality. We don't live in a one-size-fits-all world, right? So if you applied it from that fashion and the vast majority did not exist in this configuration, I could understand where the context just doesn't match. But in this particular instance, again, this is only one of four properties on the island that are of this size. So it's, this property is grossly out of scale and context with the vast majority of the neighbors. And so that's what I'm appealing to this board for consideration on.
So we know how large the other plots are? The other four that you mentioned?
The other four? I do not have the total sizes of the other four. I could calculate those, but I don't have the other sizes of the other four. They are larger than ours, which currently is, our total lot currently is 20,645 square feet without the island.
But how much frontage do we have until 129?
Correct.
Okay. Do we know the frontage of the other four large plots?
So that's on square footage. So there are more than four lots, to be clear on the record. There are more than four properties that have a larger frontage. There's one, two, three, four, five, six... There are 15 properties of the 60 that have a frontage that is larger than 75 feet. The four out of the 60 that I provided is lot size.
And we don't know the frontage of those other lot sizes?
We do. They vary. For instance, these that are here are 78 feet, so just over the 75 feet. This one is 80. So they vary. There's 88, 89, 90. And this exhibit is in your material.
Do we have any over 120?
You have these properties at the end that are over 120. And I believe, no, this one is probably about the same size as our property here. But there's only one, two, there's only two that have a frontage that appear larger than ours.
And we don't know the, how many feet we have frontage?
Unfortunately, these, because of the configuration on the cul-de-sac, the surveyor did not, was not able to properly provide the frontage on those two.
Any other questions?
Let's take the public comments.
Speaker cards? I think Claudia had a response to one of the questions.
So to the lot width, we have one property that is 130 feet, which is actually this property. We have another one that is 118, another one that is, another one 118.
Larger than ours?
Larger than yours?
Which is 130.
130. 235, which is 333 Atlantic Ave.
Yeah, we, thank you. We also provided, what Claudia was referring to, was we also provided a matrix of every property on the island that includes lot frontage and total lot size. This exhibit also includes, you know, medians as well, which show that the proposed lot frontages and proposed lot size are well within the medians of the existing conditions.
So essentially, those two properties in the cul-de-sac, if they wanted to be subdivided, they would meet the requirement of the minimum frontage. Now, that other property that we have at the other end that you said that is similar to this property, how many feet is it frontage?
So the frontage is, it's four lots. So, but note that the lot on the edge is not, is an irregular-shaped lot. So it's, from a lot size standpoint, it likely has the 30 feet of frontage, but you can see that it, this one here, 200, 200 Atlantic. I believe it has.
So will meet the requirement of a frontage, but not the density or the square footage?
It's 118 feet, to be exact. And it's a 17,444 square foot lot. So it's smaller.
Thank you very much. We have some public speakers. Ari Steiger. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Ari Steiger, 262 Atlantic Island. I think that our island is designated for single-family homes on the lots that are right there now. If we give a variance to this house, again, there's four more houses that will come in for a variance. And I don't think that any, maybe a couple of the neighbors would like it if they have the bigger lot. But the old neighbors that were living there for 30 years do not appreciate to do two houses on a lot. Therefore, I don't think you should gain any variances for, you know, especially variance for width or length because it's not appropriate. So I'll think twice about it and deny it because we're going to open a can of worm for the rest of the island, and it's going to set forward for more people that I know that just bought lots and have the designation to build two homes on it.
Thank you. Loretta Muffin? Can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, hi, I'm Loretta Muffin. I live at 310 Atlantic Isle. I just have some concerns regarding the request. It was mentioned that neighbors were interviewed or asked. I was not. No one approached me or my husband, maybe because there was a previous meeting about a lot next to us and people knew that I was kind of against that. So maybe that's why I was not approached. It was stated that Atlantic Island Civic Association approved this. I'm the secretary and the treasurer of the association, and we, as an entity, never discussed it, let alone approved it. So I just want to make sure that that's... discussed it, let alone approved it, so I just want to make sure that that's known. Regarding number four setbacks, number five lot coverage, number six floor area ratio, and number seven building space, the report says it's not applicable because it's currently a vacant lot. But my concern is that, you know, if this gets approved, then probably other variances will be requested, height, width, you know, the setbacks. Because, you know, when you have a smaller lot, you know, people these days want to build as much as they can on what they have, and I'm afraid it's gonna set a precedent. And I do believe there are other lots in the island that people own, and they're considering, you know, they're watching this, because they're considering splitting their lot, too. So, I don't think it's a good precedent to start. The homes that, you know, were plotted before, back in the day, you know, they built smaller homes, they fit the lot. Today, that's not the case. People try to build as much as they can on the property they have, and I just don't think that's good for our neighborhood and the aesthetics of it, so, thank you for your time, thank you.
Thank you. Warren Campbell and John Campbell? Can you state your name and address for the record?
Warren Campbell, two-fourteen Atlantic Avenue. I think the attorney that was making the case hit the nail on the head, it's the context of the neighborhood and the uniqueness of the island. I think before you actually came up with the land development, or however you phrase it, to have the seventy-five-foot frontage, it kind of put the card ahead of the horse, because they didn't really look at the island as it was originally plotted, and that goes back to the late eighteen hundreds. I think you should look at it on a case-by-case basis because of its uniqueness. There are people there that are building beautiful homes, and our neighbors are correct, they will build as much as they can, but what they're building is very nice-looking. As a matter of fact, the design that we were presented, because we, but the neighbor that tried to get the variance, it's a beautiful home, very similar to the ones already there, which take up as much land as the neighboring homes. So, I think you have to look at it as a unique situation, it's not a cookie-cutter neighborhood, every lot is different.
Thank you. The speaker was against, but it's, okay, the speaking card was for against. Humberto Ortiz. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Humberto Ortiz, two-seven-eight Atlantic Isle. I just want to say, and I'm in for the splitting of the lot, not only, and I've known the board as for many, many years, not only are they a beautiful family, but as you can tell, they have two girls that are growing up and will grow up in our community. Also, I want to say that my lot is also at sixty feet, and you don't need more space. I think that the more families that we can bring into the island, which is a beautiful island, the better it is, the more taxes that we can receive. So, Ari's lot, I know that, he talks about it, but Ari's lot is sixty, is sixty feet wide himself. One of the lots that we're talking about that's a little bit bigger is my next-door neighbor's, Tommy Sessa's lot, and Tommy's never gonna sell, and he himself has signed the petition saying that it's okay for him to split the lot. So, I'm one-hundred again for it, and I hope that that beautiful family can move into our island, it'll be an asset to the community, thank you.
Thank you. Maggie Gordo? Can you state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, my name is Maggie Gordo, one-sixty-seven-eleven Collins Avenue, and I'm here continuing my constant appeal to you to look at the overdevelopment of our beautiful city. Why am I saying this? Because we are talking about a beautiful family that is not told not to build a beautiful home in a beautiful lot, but that wants to have two beautiful families to be there, and there will be two beautiful families that we have to evacuate. So, I am not here to be against any beautiful families, but I am here to tell you that you were elected to stop overdevelopment. If we bring two families instead of one, then we have more density, and even though it's conforming to the comprehensive plan, in this case, it's non-conforming, and we know for a fact that for years, we have not taken care of the issue of the town center, that is a problem for us, and you, as you're newly elected, we voted you in to change the culture. The culture has to be, we need to do studies, we need to do data, and whatever is allowed in the law is what should be built. I don't want to be against anyone, but I want to be for the city of Sunny Elbeach. We need to take care of the overdevelopment, and you cannot do it by bringing more people and making a non-conforming lot. That, to me, is just incredible, that we are now going to legally agree that we're gonna take a perfectly good, conforming lot and turn it into a non-conforming lot for someone to build again and bring another family. So, the family can take the two lots and build a beautiful home and take care of the family there, but we need to take care of our city. Our city is overdeveloped, and we need to fix it, please think about that.
Thank you. Okay, no more, there are no more public speaker cards, so, wanna open it up for discussion?
They're the owners, yeah, so, the representative.
Yes?
My name is Mario Borda, I'm the owner of the property, and I come specifically to speak on behalf of my family. Now, we came to this island because, I mean, we were introduced to the island by one of our good friends, Humberto Ortiz, who spoke on our behalf. His property is sixty feet. I mean, we went through all this analysis trying to determine what is conforming, what's non-conforming, but how do you define that? I mean, more than fifty percent of your lots are less than sixty feet. I mean, some of the people who were opposing our property have sixty feet. Seventy-two percent of these lots are sixty feet or smaller. So, what we're proposing is, we're proposing to build two homes, one for each of our daughters. I mean, that's our intent, our intent is not to turn this into a massive development or to try to change the city. I mean, we're just trying to build two homes similar to, or these two, or these two, or these two, or these two, I mean, we have all of these here, each of these is sixty feet. So, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, yeah.
Claudia, do we foresee any future variances?
It's too early to answer that question, we don't know until actually we move forward, if we move forward with this, and then we'll get a site plan. But we will not know until we see the site plan, and then we evaluate if that site plan includes or not any variances request, but as council has mentioned, if it comes and includes a variance, it will have to come back in front of you for that decision to be made.
And I could say that we have no intention of asking for additional variances, but as Claudia just said, anything that we would request that is outside of the LDR, so to address one of the neighbor's concerns with it leading to additional LDR variance requests, that would have to come before you. And again, to answer the conversation that we had earlier, that's where context is incredibly important and where you have the ability to say contextually, you know, that that would not be the appropriate instance to do so.
If there's no further discussion, then a motion can be made.
Any of the, any commissioners have any, you have any comments?
I'd like to make some comments, so, there's a tough one, but I mean, if you look ahead twenty, thirty, forty years, you know, down the road, you know, what would prevent your neighbor that has a frontage of a hundred and eight feet? What would prevent that neighbor, or what would guarantee the city that he would not come before us and ask for a variance, to have two frontages of fifty-four feet each, right? Right now, you're asking for sixty and sixty-nine, I believe, right? So, it kind of begs the question, I mean, are, there's unintended consequences, and, you know, we're opening Pandora's box to, you know, thirty, forty years down the road, there's some houses in that island that are quite old already. So, eventually, you know, those are gonna be bought, or the family's gonna rebuild there, and that's my concern. My concern is not so much now, but eventually, you know, we're looking at a city that, you know, I've been here over thirty years, and not in my wildest dreams that I envision all of this that's happening. So, you know, I am concerned about that. You know, it's like, what, you know, with a straight face, how can I deny your neighbor that has a frontage of a hundred and eight feet denying from partitioning that into fifty-four feet of frontage? So, I understand that you're saying that we gotta look at the context, but I think what I'm saying is that, that's part of the context, too. You know, you're looking, you gotta look ahead, and that's where my doubts come in, you know, and my, let's say, apprehensions come in, yeah.
I'm not in favor of this lot split. I'm reviewing this upon the advice of both staff and council, and I'm not, I'm not in favor of, I'm not in favor of the lot split.
I would add to Commissioner Lama's comment, I don't, I don't think we're looking at thirty, forty years, I think we're probably looking at five, ten years. So, and to me, it's just counterintuitive to take one conforming lot and turn it into two non-conforming lots, when, and I appreciate the context argument, but part of that context is the grandfathered-in lots, they existed before the regulations were created, and so, there's nothing we can do with those. So, they exist, and I understand it's a mismatched situation, and I appreciate it's a very creative argument, but at the end of the day, these regulations existed when this particular purchase was made. And, you know, it was a risk taken, a calculated risk, I suppose, that thinking that you could turn it into two, but I, to me, if we do that, not only are we opening the door, I do think it's a bit of a can of worms, but I also feel that there's no point in having the code. So, and as Ms. Gordo said, you know, this is not preventing a lovely family from moving into the city and having a lovely life, they'll just be in a, now have the option to build a bigger house on a bigger lot, if that's what they choose to do. So, for that reason, it's just, to me, the bottom line is, to me, it feels very counterintuitive to go from conforming to non-conforming when our purpose is supposed to be in the other direction.
I have to say that I also find the piece of island lot also a future issue as well, because as of right now, with the amount of lot that you have, you have this piece of lot islands there that is in front of both, in the views of both lots, and it's, I find that to be also, if we're looking at each specific particular case, I find that is also an issue.
So, I don't know, we, motion to deny, motion to, if anybody has a motion? Do we?
We can either take a motion to deny the application, or a motion to approve and see if that one passes. Either way, you know, a motion is being made.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to deny.
Commissioner Lama? This is a motion to deny.
To deny, yeah, I agree, yes.
Commissioner Stuvasant? Commissioner Robinovich?
Agree.
Agree.
Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Goldman?
Yes.
The application is denied. Okay, we can move along, mayor. The next item is six-B. It's an application for a balcony enclosure for the property located at one-seventy-eight-seventy-five Collins Avenue, unit forty-eight oh six. The applicants are Elias Saul and Diana Grimberg. And before we move forward, are there any ex-party communications for this application? No one?
No.
Perfect, thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, commissioners, this application is a request to modify the site plan and a transfer of development rights. Did we add that item, Odysio, to this request?
So, I forgot to mention that. So, yes, so we're gonna hear this companion item, which is ten-A, and ten-A is a resolution approving the purchase and assignment of transfer of development rights in the amount of three-hundred-and-forty-three square feet of floor area ratio and zero dwelling units from the city's public TDR bank account to Elias Saul and Diana Grimberg, authorizing the Development Services Act to withdraw three-hundred-and-forty-three square feet of FAR and zero dwelling units from the city's public TDR bank account, and assigning the three-hundred-and-forty-three square feet of FAR to the property located at one-seventy-eight-seventy-five, one-seventy-eight, one-seventy-eight-eighty-five Collins Avenue, unit forty-eight oh six.
Basically, as Ma, Odysio mentioned, this is to enclose a balcony and an existing unit at Aquolina, they will be enclosing and adding a square footage to their unit by three-hundred-and-forty-three square feet. This will bring the overall floor ratio for the entire building to eight-hundred-and-six-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-three square feet of floor ratio. This application is also requesting TDRs, that is where the increase of floor ratio will come from. With that said, this application is consistent with our comprehensive plan and with our land development regulations, this is not a variance or anything of that source, and similarly, in the past, also, this have come in from, to you. The owners of the units are here, if you have any questions, but I don't think so. If you have any questions, we'll happy to address them.
This is our standard, our cookie-cutter TDR application.
For balconies, correct. All conditions are set up in the staff report, the price of TDRs is a typical a hundred and twenty-five dollars per square feet.
Are we combining this also with the resolution?
Yes, this is combined with ten-A.
Not much to add?
If you have any questions?
No questions on my part, not much to add, this is a pretty standard, straightforward application. No public comments, so, I think that's, okay, so, you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
No, this is a roll call, mayor.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Robinovich?
Aye.
Commissioner Stuvasant? Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Goldman?
Yes.
The application is approved.
Thank you.
Next item. Those are, that's, we're on seven-A?
Yes, ordinance is first reading. Seven-A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Elbeach, Florida, creating chapter six of the City of Sunny Elbeach Court of Ordinances to be titled Boards, Commissions, and Committees to Provide for the Creation of an Environment Sustainability Advisory Committee, stating the purpose, powers, and duties of the and duties of the committee, providing for member qualifications, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date. This is first reading.
Okay. I would like to make a few comments before the next items are introduced and discussed by my colleagues. So, this, this pertains to both Items seven A and seven B, the ordinance creating not only the Sustainability Committee, but the ordinance creating a pedestrian and mobility safety committee. I can't tell you how many times residents have approached me over the years and asked, "How can I get more involved in our city?" Or, "How can I help our city?" These residents are ready, willing, and able to help our city meet the challenges we face, and move our city forward together as one community. Our city is blessed to have an incredible pool of residents with expertise and experience in an array of fields. They also understand firsthand some of the challenges we face. As you know, our city's charter and ordinances already have provisions dealing with citizen advisory boards. It's something we can get moving in a matter of weeks. Yet, for too many years, our residents have not been given an opportunity to serve our city in a meaningful way. They feel that they have been shut out of the process, they feel ignored. That will change, starting with tonight's agenda items to form two standing advisory committees. It's time to get more of our residents involved in a meaningful way, so we, as a commission, can make the best decisions possible. The first committee, again, and not in this order, is the Pedestrian Mobility Safety Advisory Board. I don't have to tell anyone here tonight, or listening at home, that taming the deadly chaos on our streets is a top priority. Residents are tired of hearing excuses from City Hall about why our streets are so treacherous for pedestrians, joggers, bicyclists, and other motorists. We are working on a host of ideas to finally deal with this issue in a comprehensive manner. Some are shorter-term solutions, others will require a longer-term approach. We must engage in this two-track approach if we want to see at least some tangible results in months instead of years. Of course, we will need cooperation from our county and state partners, both here and in Tallahassee, but there are several things we can do relatively quickly. You have probably noticed an increased police presence on our roads recently. I want to thank our police tremendously for committing to help combat this dangerous situation. But we can never police ourselves outs, out of danger. Our police will tell you that themselves. We need other major road safety measures. The city manager and his administration will roll out other proposals to this, to out other proposals to this new committee. The citizens will then absorb, tweak, and suggest ways to improve them. One last comment about this subject. I know some people might wonder about the cost to make our roads safer and more aesthetically pleasing. I can tell you the cost of not doing something meaningful will be a lot more in lives and family tragedies. And we will have tens of millions of dollars to spend on these projects if we decide not to build pedestrian bridges that few residents want and fewer will use. The second committee, and again, in, in, in reverse order, is the Environment and Sustainability Advisory Board. This citizen committee will deal with several issues that not only affect our health and safety, but our quality of life. For instance, the city manager will be unveiling a major tree planting initiative soon. Our residents will weigh in on the details of his plan, which will beautify our city and make it more environmentally sustainable. Our city also faces threats from leaking sanitary sewer pipes. As you know, our entire area suffers from periodic no-swim advisories because of dangerous levels of fecal bacteria. We literally have raw sewage flowing into our waterways. The county technically is responsible for our sewer service, but our city needs to take the lead in, in dealing with this problem before it causes an environmental and economic catastrophe. There's also the issue of stormwater runoff that affects our water quality. Again, our waterways and beaches are the crown jewels of our city. We must do everything to protect them. We also must assess the quality of our drinking water and its supply infrastructure. Our new city manager already has some ideas on this subject. Both of these areas also involve infrastructure controlled by others, in this case, the county and our neighbors in North Miami Beach. But once again, our city absolutely must take the lead on these issues to ensure our residents' safety and quality of life. I now would like to begin the discussion with my colleagues by asking for a motion to introduce these ordinances on first reading. I suggest we discuss both at the same time, since they are almost identical in substance. Okay, so we have the Sustainability Committee?
Okay, so just to clear up the record, we can consider both, but it'll be two separate votes, and two separate public comment sections.
Okay, so, open for comments?
For, do you want to do discussion amongst the commission first, or public comments?
Um, we can do, we can do public comments, okay. We have a comment, Larissa Svetchen. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Larissa Svetchen, 19140 Atlantic Avenue. Mine is not a comment, I have a question. First of all, I am thrilled that you have all these new ideas from the city manager, that's great, and that you're finally looking at committees that are gonna be based on issues like we have with the Public Arts Committee, which is fantastic, because then people can really focus on what they're passionate about. My question is logistical. What are the implications as far as they have to follow sunshine, how often they're gonna meet, do we have to hire more staff, that sort of thing? If you can just address those questions.
They will be, Stan, you know, you might want to comment, but certainly, they will be consistent with the charter and formed in, in, in a similar manner to which the, the PAC was, was formed. So, this is all per charter and the code. And these are, these are advisory boards, these are not...
Correct.
These are not, these are advisory committees.
I, I ask these questions in, in my agenda review, because I was thinking, you know, along the same lines. So, because I, I know that there's times that sometimes sunshine applies, and other times it doesn't, and so I want a clarification on that as well. And what the city clerk told me is that if they're fact-finding committees, and they are not making recommendations, then they're not subject to sunshine. But if they, if they're advisory in nature, then they, they are subject to sunshine, and they would function much like, like the other committees. Am I getting that right?
Yes, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong. Again, if they're fact-finding and they're limited to just gathering the facts and presenting them to the commission, then they're not bound by the sunshine. But the minute that they make a recommendation, or they start to eliminate facts to present them to you, then that becomes a board that needs to function under the sunshine.
And since these apparently are both advisory committees, that, that they would both require the same requirements that you have for notification of their meetings, public opportunity to, to come, and, and minutes be taken.
I did have another question, I'm sorry, I didn't know if we were done with the comments. Is there any other comments?
Yes, we have another public speaker's card, Jerry Joseph. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Hello, my name is Jerry Joseph, 18560 North Bay Road. I'd like to say that I believe these committees are an expansion of government and wasteful. We currently have a workshop process that's working fine, and with the addition of citywide suggestion boxes, I believe that that should suit the needs, and that these committees should not be needed. Thank you.
No more public speakers?
There's none.
Of course, I view these as high-priority substantive areas and high-priority commissions in the same way that the PAC was formed. Again, a, a specific purpose and assembling, assembling committee and participation, I'm absolutely in favor of, you know, moving, moving these committees forward.
I think they would be a great addition for our community. I think that, especially as being a resident that was recently appointed, I, I have felt very, you know, frustrated in the pushback that my concerns, my suggestions weren't really being acknowledged. I think this is a great opportunity, and it's time to open up these communication lines and really invite our residents to be part of the decision-making in our city. And certainly these, certainly these subject areas are of utmost importance for the city. We had this, this, this aversion of this conversation some time ago in the context of the, the city advisory committee that I, that I felt was not, it just wasn't really working anymore, because it was such a structured in a way of a fishing expedition. And we talked before about having project-specific committees and exploring that. Creating committees that, so I think that this is that, a compromise, is that where you're giving them a subject, and you're creating a committee. And I think it's worth exploring. The, there has been a void in, in terms of the residents' ability to participate. They're just, it's been a void. It's, it's been, when the CAC, in my opinion, properly stopped, there was not, there was no new opportunities created. And I think this is giving, giving, we have the PAC as an example of, of a successful template, and if we have a focus, and we can give some direction, I, I think it's worth exploring. And then if it ends up, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but at least we're creating the opportunity. We haven't done that in, in several years. I, it's worth, it's worth exploring.
I have a question. So, it will work like the Historic Preservation Committee, basically, right? Because the idea is for them to do recommendations.
Yes, the, essentially, the, both committees that are being created would research, gather the information, make recommendations to the commission, based on what their focus is.
In these two, in these two, in these two subject areas, which are high, high, you know, high relevance to our city.
I think it's an amazing idea, because everyone has different motivation, inspiration, what you really want to see changes. And bringing new ideas, fresh ideas, I think it, it will help. I think it will, is the purpose of it, and I'm for it. I like it. I would have liked to participate, basically, in these committees and have my, my, my little to help find solutions. So, I think if we allow that to the public, we can feel like we are part of a community.
That's our republic's, that's their money. That's out of order.
So, I, I, I'm for these committees, too. I think, like Vice Mayor Viscara said, that these are, let's say, we have specific, let's say, tasks that are assigned, and I think there's a, let's say, there's a clear direction on where these committees, what they need to accomplish. So, I'm for those. What, what I would like to know is how we would go about choosing the members. I know with the city advisor committee, I think each commissioner would get one pick, I believe the mayor would get two picks. I, so I, I'm just trying to understand how we would form these. And let's say, this is another question that came up, let's say we can't form these, these are ordinances, are we breaking our own law?
No, no, we're gonna, we're gonna use the, the PAC as our model. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna put out a, basically, right, and we, we would receive applications or resumes, and we have a very highly qualified panel that, for the PAC, and we're, we're looking to model that in that fashion. People, as the, as these proposed ordinance state, that we're looking for requisite industry experience or interest in the subject matter. So, we have a more focused committee with, you know, again, experience...
Okay.
Background, skill sets, that can really, you know, contribute or lend to that particular subject matter.
Okay.
And when they meet, anyway, it's gonna be open to the public, right?
Correct.
So, anybody can come, and so, even if they're not part of the board, they can participate?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, they can attend, I don't know about participation.
Attend.
But they can attend. I guess that depends on the rules.
No, these are bound by the sunshine, so they are allowed to participate and attend, obviously.
Yeah, in the city advisor committee, people will come up, and there'll be a conversation back and forth.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, I think, so, we, do we have a motion? Do we take this separate, or...
We need a motion. Yes, this would be for seven A.
Seven A, for the Environment and Sustainability Committee? So, we have a motion?
Motion.
So moved?
So moved, second, second.
Okay. All in favor? Or do we take a roll, a roll call?
This is a roll call.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll get that right.
Commissioner Stuvasant?
Aye.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Robinovich?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Goldman?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading. Second reading will be scheduled for January.
Okay, we take a separate, we take a motion?
Let me just read it into the record. Seven B is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, granting Chapter Six of the City of Sunny Hills Beach Court of Ordinances to provide for the establishment of a pedestrian and mobility safety advisory committee, stating the purpose, powers, and duties of the committee, providing for member qualifications, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date. And this is first reading. Okay. Commissioner Robinovich?
Aye.
Commissioner Stuvasant?
Aye.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Goldman?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading. Second reading will be scheduled for January.
Okay, on to Item ten A.
Ten A was already heard, it was a companion item for six B.
That's right, so we're going to ten B.
Ten B is a resolution authorizing the disposal of electronic equipment as surplus property through Electronic Recycling Center, Inc.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners. This item before you is for authorization to dispose of our surplus equipment. As we generally do, we ask the school if they can use any of the equipment, and if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to ask, to answer.
So, just one point. So, you had, for this equipment, you, before you give to this organization, you had approached, I guess, the school or other entities in the city, or within the premise...
Yes, I'm waiting for final word from the school. Any equipment that they want, we will give to them. And the rest of it, quite honestly, most of it is non-functional, and it is very old, so it is not useful.
Thank you. Any comments?
Can we also offer it to the high school? Because maybe they can use it for experiment, to open, and, you know, to our, our Lonsdale Tracy Morning High School.
I can certainly do that.
Good, thank you.
Yes.
Good, good, okay.
Motion.
Motion? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming back.
Ten C is a resolution approving an increase in spending authority with Disencrup Elevator Corporation for elevator maintenance services.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioner, we have a five-year agreement in place with Disencrup, which is an LTK elevator. They service the two elevators at the Gateway Pedestrian Bridge. So, this request is for an increase in authorized spending with them. We've had some additional service calls over the year, the years, and there's been a few increases in the annual maintenance as well. So, this is a request for some additional funds to get us through the remainder of the agreement.
Any, any comments? Any, my colleagues?
No.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
No.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ten D is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Sunny Hills Beach, by and through its Police Department, and the Florida Department of Law Enforcement for the purpose of facilitating a... for the purpose of facilitating investigations of certain police-related incidents.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioner. This is a memorandum of understanding that we're trying to enter into with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement to handle all investigations involving police shootings or in custody deaths involving the Sunny Hills Beach Police Department. In the past, we've always used the services of Miami-Dade Police Department. But in the interest of keeping everything transparent and uniform, all, most agencies in Florida so far are switching over to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement doing everybody's. We're one of the, probably the last ones in Dade County so far going to this, but most agencies in South Florida are looking towards it.
Any comments? I think we're all in.
I think it sounds good.
Sounds good. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. 10E?
10E is a resolution requesting a waiver of the bidding requirements set forth in Chapter 662 of the City Code, approving an agreement with Duracerve Corp., which is doing business as overhead door company of South Florida for the purchase and installation of a security gate for the government center parking garage.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Senior Manager, and Staff. This agreement is for security gates at the bottom level of the garage entrance that will be fob activated for city personnel, cars, vehicles, work vehicles. We went out and researched different types of high-speed gates that are applicable for this operation, for what we do at the city. This company was the best company with the best price.
Happy to see some beefed-up security. Hopefully, we'll be able to get in and out of the building.
That would not be a problem. There's always, these gates have like a manual override. If there was ever an issue, you just unhook them and you can open them. So, you know, security or emergency access is not an issue.
Good to hear.
So just to understand, the police cars will have some sort of, how would they go in? They will have a transponder or something? And the gates will, and we, city staff, will have like a fob or something, right?
Yeah, everybody, every vehicle we want to use gets registered with a fob.
Okay.
So the original contract has 400. So that way, all the inspector vehicles, police vehicles, motorcycles, city staff that's using the garage will have that with their cars.
So when you say fob, just trying to understand, I'm not going to have a fob and then press it to the panel? It's just going to automatically, it's going to be in the car and they'll automatically open up?
It'll probably be like a windshield sticker on your car that, you know, it's there. And then they can be deactivated if people come and go. We can deactivate them.
And those are going to open up with enough time? Let's say there's a police emergency, they need to exit quickly of the parking structure, it will open up with enough time for them to?
Yes, what we're doing on the exit side is because of the ramp down on the exit side, we're actually going to put the receiving unit farther up the ramp. So as the cars come around the turn, it'll activate, the door will open before you get to the bottom.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And these are fairly high-speed. If you wanted to see one in action, the new garage on King's Point Drive that was just put in has these gates in them, and you can see how quickly they go up and down.
And there was only one company, right? That it was qualified, able, and they responded? Because you guys did a long research, we can only find really one that could give this service, right?
That's correct. I had a couple that were interested. They didn't get back to me with the proper bid information.
Correct.
Some of them didn't want to go into Dade County because they're just Broward County. So these were the best guys to do the job, and we've seen their product.
I think we're all in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I just wanted to make a comment because independent of the gate, which sounds good, you know, it's greater security, and I believe it'll work towards the accreditation of the police department. I think that's one of the requirements. But we had a previous discussion about accessibility to the police department. So if we put a gate at the garage, and I need to access the police department at 2:00 in the morning, we need to address that simultaneously with this. How are we going to do that?
We're looking at options now, and we will be prepared to have that in place prior to the installation of the gate.
Okay, and being the, with the, the security guard, using the lobby, what are we looking at?
That's the tentative plan, but we're looking at all options, yes.
I just want to make sure we don't do that, and then I can't access the police department at 2:00 in the morning on a Sunday. Right?
Correct, yes.
Take a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item?
10F is a resolution approving an amendment, a Seventh Amendment to the Agreement with Lee Richards Design Associates to provide for an additional renewal term and additional services related to the meditation garden.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, this is a renewal. We have Kathy O'Leary Richards Design Associates on contract for plan review, which is reimbursable expenses, minor designs, and monthly inspections. And we had also contracted with her to design the meditation garden. That project had been delayed. So now that we are re-engaging her, there's been an increase in some fees. So this Seventh Amendment will get us through another full year of her services and a little added funds for the meditation garden. And then next year, we'll be going out to bid for a new landscape architect.
You're happy?
Yes.
We're happy.
Yes. She's good. She helped write our bids. She, we can call on her for anything.
Absolutely. Some things in works.
Yes.
All right. Any comments, or can we have a motion? Can some?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item?
10G is a resolution approving Change Order Number 32 relating to the Agreement with Royal Global Networks for the Collins Avenue Utilities Undergrounding Project.
As you just heard two days ago in the workshop, Paul Abbott gave a great presentation on where we stand with the Golden Shores Undergrounding and also the Collins Avenue. We are nearing the finish line. This additional funds and time is to finish the project, which is the streetlights on Collins Avenue.
Any comments? Can I get a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. 10H?
10H is a resolution ratifying an agreement with the Stout Group, Inc. for the construction of the Golden Shores Utility Undergrounding Project.
This item was before you previously, and you approved it in substantially that form in this exact same amount. And it is now for you, before you for ratification as the resolution required. This is for the undergrounding of the Golden Shores community and the urban trail and the sidewalk on Atlantic.
I have some, I have public speaker's cards. Steve Trattner? Can you state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Steve Trattner, 265-187 St. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. As a 28-year resident of Golden Shores, first I want to say thank you. A lot of us do not take this project lightly. $6 million is a huge investment for the city. We recognize that. But we're also very, very excited. This is the final stage of what's been a very long underground project for our utilities. Also glad to see some of the things that were thrown into this, including sidewalks, the pedestrian walkway, which is something that Juan Costa and I had recommended to the commission quite a while back. But I read through the agreement between the city and the Stout Group, which, by the way, also is extremely thorough. So I appreciate that as well. Very, very well-written. It addressed a lot of the questions and concerns I have and a lot of us in the community have. But there are a few exceptions to that. So I wrote those down here, and I didn't want to forget any of them. So I'll ask the questions. If you need me to repeat them later, but I'll, you know, in lieu of the time that I have, I'll ask the questions, and you can address these later. Number one is the start date, the notice to proceed. Paul Abbott mentioned it would be sometime in February, although that wasn't very specific. So it'd be great to get some definitive time on that. Overall, it would be great if we can get a, kind of a series of events of when things are going to occur over the 18-month period and some periodic updates. So if there's going to be any service interruptions, obstructions, detours, things of that nature, it'd be good to alert the neighborhood in advance of those things. Specifically, in Section 7, dot 16, dot 3, it states that the contractor will have to work with the city to obtain consent from the property owners before they access those properties. I'm curious how we're going to go about actually acquiring or obtaining that consent from the property owners, and how much advance notice we'd be giving the property owners when they have to access their property. And then the very next section, 7 dot 16 dot 4, in that section, it states that the contractor shall notify the property owners no less than two days in advance of any impact on the homeowner. And it says specifically requires two days' advance notice. Due to the fact that, oh, I'm running out of time. Due to the fact that a lot of people are working from home right now, that impact could actually be greater than it would be otherwise. So I would ask if the contract's not already executed, if we can push that to at least four days so that homeowners have the opportunity to be able to make other arrangements should they need to. In addition to that, if we can add to the language any excessive noise, because again, if they're doing conference calls and video conferencing from home, the pounding in the street could really be an annoyance for the property owners. Let's see. And in Section 13, dot 2, the comprehensive general liability. May I continue? In the general liability section, it does not specifically call out liability to the property owners, only to the city. I want to make sure that the property owners are included in that. And then who's going to be the arbiter should there be any property damage? I wouldn't want to leave that up to the property owners to have to deal directly with the contractor or the contractor's insurance company. I've been in that situation before, and it took a year and a half to get something done.
Steve, thank you. Thanks. Ed, Valerie?
A lot of that is going to have to be answered by Paul, you know, since he's the manager of the project. So we'll get with him. As you know, he's left the building for the next month, but Valerie's in touch with him very frequently. So we'll work on some of those things and report back to you.
I think that one of the virtues of this particular, this contractor was that we were, you know, they specifically had a staging plan, and that was what distinguished them from the lowest bidder. So that's why we chose, because of their attention to the whole staging process. And that was high in the criteria for approving this particular vendor, right?
Correct, in order to try to avoid impacts to the homeowners in the neighborhood.
Okay. We have another public speaker here, Rumiana Grozanova. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Rumiana Grozanova, 221-86 St. Hello, everybody, new people, old people. We know each other. For this, Steve already mentioned for the underground. I just want to know when approximately, not the day, but approximately, when it's going to be starting for underground in Golden Shores. My question is, when is it going to be approximately? Because that was approved a long time ago.
I think that's been asked and answered.
Yeah, I think we're going to start, try to start in February of 2022.
February? Okay. I was thinking about all this, it's going to be taxpayer money, about this committee advisory.
That's not responsive to this item. So you want to stay focused on this topic. Your comment is for item 10H, correct?
10H, yes. And what about 10I?
We're not on 10I, we're on 10H right now.
The same thing's going on lately. Everybody think what is going on in the city lately. All the meeting, 5:00, 6:00, 10:00 AM. 5:00, nobody can wait. But you wanted that, to have some people.
Thank you for your, thank you for your comments. Jerry Joseph, we have another comment, another speaker for item 10H. State your name and address for the record, please.
Jerry Joseph, 18560 North Bay Road. I understand that there are sidewalks, and when the, on the completion of this project, there are to be new roadways paved according to the concrete and asphalt that's used in the state of Pennsylvania. They currently use pervious asphalt and pervious concrete on their streets and roads, which alleviates flooding, which is a big, would be quite advantageous to us here. We have a lot of flooding in Golden Shores, and adding impervious concrete would only exacerbate that issue. And we have also a problem with the swells in Golden Shores that are required. And if we were to use pervious asphalt, that would alleviate that issue. We wouldn't have to have the rise in the middle of the roadway. We could have actually flat roadways to increase the absorption of the water. And that would absolutely alleviate a lot of the flooding that we have now. Stan, that's something that I wanted to speak to about tomorrow as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other comments? Any comments from the commission? Take a motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I would just like to say that we do have on our website a Golden Shores Undergrounding Street Lighting Project update page, and we do have the door hangers. So we will be notifying everybody as, you know, well in advance. And Steve, if you'd like, I can share information directly with you that you can share with your community as things develop. Okay?
Thank you. That's very useful.
10I is a resolution ratifying a consulting agreement with Lynn M. Denheiser LLC for the implementation of the cultural master plan.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this item is presented to you for ratification. Ratification, in this case, meaning after-the-fact approval. This item was approved under a prior administration during emergency authorization powers afforded to the city manager regarding purchasing and the ability to enter into contracts. This item was brought to me by our finance department, who indicated that there had never been given ultimate authority and approval by the city commission. For procedural and auditing purposes, this open-ended item now needs to be closed via commission approval. And my conversations with the city attorney explained that he had asked that this item be brought before you in the past, and we need to bring it before you now for approval. This contract was a mutually agreed upon termination as of December 3, 2021. This is not an ongoing contract. So we've paid this vendor currently $38,990.78 for the months of May through September. There's a balance due of $12,251.92 for the months of October and November for a grand total of $51,242.70. of fifty-one thousand two four two point seven zero. So we're presenting it to you and asking you for ratification in order to close the loop from the procedural and finance purposes.
We do have a public speaker for this man.
Rumiana Groz... So we have any comments from the commission?
So just for the record, when we, when the city decides to go into contract with any kind of vendor or consultant, it needs to go in front of the commission if it's, what amount, fifty thousand?
In excess of fifty thousand dollars, it has to come to you for approval.
So basically, this is to clear the after-the-fact issue, right, to make it compliant to, for finance?
Correct, yes.
And the consultant already resigned. So the way this plays out is we approve...
Vice mayor, could you speak on the mic?
I'm sorry. So the consultant already resigned. So we approve this contract so that it makes it okay that she's already been paid the thirty, and it makes it okay that we pay her the work that she's already worked up until this point. And then, because she's already resigned, do we then have to come back and terminate the contract? Or do you do that, does it happen as a matter of law?
We've done that administratively, upon receipt of the resignation letter. So there's no need for it to come back to you.
Okay. And approving this would allow us as a city, then we're basically cleaning it up and making us compliant with...
Correct, with your code.
...the event of an audit or, well, we will be audited, we get audited.
We're going through one right now.
We're going through it now. So this is to, so that we have all our items checked off on the audit and...
Correct.
But we agree that this should have been, this should have been before us, before.
Yes, it should have been.
Okay. And then we're going to clean it up now. Okay.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ten J is a resolution, I'm sorry, that item has been deferred.
It's been deferred.
We're on to discussion items, twelve A, beautification of causeways.
Okay. Among the many initiatives which are presented for the commission for discussion for this evening, the beautification of our causeways and specifically the underline of our two causeway overpass bridges, the Bill Lehman Causeway to the north and one hundred and sixty-third Street, the eight twenty-sixth East Stand Out. While these underlines are slated for repainting in a standard fashion, we now have an opportunity instead to enhance the aesthetic of these causeways and these underlines, and in doing so, the visceral appeal with a special aesthetic imprint. So I'd like to yield this discussion and the presentation to our chair of our Public Arts Committee, our PAC, Javier Rabinovich. Thank you so much.
Hi, good evening, Javier Rabinovich, one nine, one eleven Collins Avenue, Sunny Isles Beach, Florida. Good evening, commissioner, mayor, and city manager. I'm here today with Jordana. She's a curator, our curator, very recognized in the city of Miami and worldwide. And together with her, we're going to show you an idea to move forward, an idea that we agree already in the concept with the PAC more than a year ago, that we're going to present to you today.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jordana, Jordana Zanini. So as you have already mentioned, mayor, the time has come to paint the overpasses. And I thought to present this in a way where you, where it would bring an international botanical aspect to it and beautify the city of Sunny Isles. So if we can move forward, I propose the two artists, one is actually, both are international, well-renowned artists. I don't know how it goes. Of course, this is the beginning stages and the concept, what you will see is definitely not the actual concept that would be applied to the overpasses. If you decide to proceed with it, we would go through the concept stages where each artist would then customize based on the design and the square footage of each overpass. They would propose two commissioned pieces, whichever artist you choose, or we can do different ones as well. Based on that, so the target area would be the overpass eight twenty-six.
Obviously, the idea is to bring these artists' proposals to the art committee in order to discuss which is the best way and how we're going to move forward. But we need from the commissioners, the approval to continue with initiative.
All right. So the target area, overpass eight twenty-six, target area two, eight fifty-six, everything would be hand painted. And then the target area three would be the various utility boxes along Collins Avenue. Obviously, that would go hand in hand with the botanical aspect. As you already have, you do have some of the natural aspects of it through Collins Avenue. I think it would be a really nice addition based on the architecture and the scope of the whole design. So keep moving. One of the artists proposed would be Pixel Pancho. Actually, he's an Italian, well-renowned artist, also has a studio here in Homestead, so he's very environmentally conscious and has a farm as well as a studio. His concentration is basically machinery and kind of the symphony between technology and nature. So with the metal aspects of the overpasses, it would be a nice balance. So if we can move, if we can move to, this is some of the projects I've actually done with him. This was in Dallas. That was completed about two years ago. So a very large-scale capabilities, so an overpass would be something very easy for him to do. This is some of just the intricate works.
We are interested in his art because the botanical aspect is totally aligned with what we, with one of the elements that we define for the image of the city. And he does very good, all the leaves and the plants. Also, we are not pursuing the idea to bring faces, hands, other kind of elements. And also, he's willing to work with us to make this more line, liner, or more softer.
Of course. Based on the targeted areas, he would, if you decide to move forward with this, he would propose the actual 3D rendering of the actual design. So this is just kind of the examples of his work. The other one would be Adpio, Diego Machado, actually from Portugal. Their, his works have been seen all over the world again. And the fact that you have a very international city as well, it would be a nice way. So he intersects between Portuguese historical tiles and brings in the subject within the tile. So this would be a more architectural form of the artwork. And based on the subject or the theme, he creates the theme within the tile work. So for example, this one was done in Finland, the other one was done in Portugal, just based on, based on the theme, which is the botanical theme, we would propose the appropriate design.
The greening of Sunny Isles Beach.
Yes. Thank you.
It's great to really elevate some aesthetic, some real visceral...
Thank you.
...to our underpass, our bridges underneath.
And when it comes to, and I think, when it comes to the city rules or, I'm not very familiar in that, but if you already have a budget set for the painting, there would be such an amazing, this is an amazing opportunity where you could actually have a piece of art, not just a regular painted job for the overpass.
So this would be where the blue-gray, that whole blue-gray, Susan, that whole blue-gray strip is?
Yeah, if you put the picture again.
And then the under, and then the columns underneath?
The columns, exactly.
And this paint is actually sealed, or it's so that it lasts?
Yeah, the way it works is depending, each artist uses different types of paints. Some of them use acrylics, some use spray paint. But after the painting is done, there is a UV protection coat that it's always done in the kind of, on concrete or metal, depending on that. So that would be, it would last. And there is also, the UV protection and the coating would allow it, in case there were graffiti, people would graffiti it, it would be easier to clean it up without destroying the artwork. I have done many, sorry, I have done many projects with Goldman Global Arts and the Wynwood Group and the Goldman, so throughout the country, and would love to kind of continue with Sunny Isles, too.
It's great, it's a great theme, the botanical theme. It's a really great theme, and it's consistent with some of the objectives of...
I think this would be amazing for a city. I think it would really just take us to another level and turn us into an art destination city as well.
Yes.
You know, it would really elevate us, and it just also bridges a little bit of, maybe the purpose of what the PAC was supposed to, you know, complete it.
And I think, not that I think, but also I know based on working with many clients, you do have a large, I would say, not large, but many collectors here in your city that would really appreciate that.
Do you guys consider local artists, people from the community?
Yes.
And also, I would like to see, really, I would like to see a 3D rendering of a more, I saw the places where it would come.
With the 3D rendering, and the way it usually works in the art world is that the artist needs the engagement fee, so.
Maybe we can approve that first, you know, a fee for a 3D rendering. So we can also have an idea.
Of course.
You know, like vague idea, of course. They will give us the final one once they're doing it.
Yes.
But just to have an idea what they would like to present to us.
We're going to ask the artists to present a couple of options that we're going to discuss in the PAC, and later we're going to bring to the commissioner meeting again.
Yes.
Yeah, we're obviously not Wynwood, but, you know, something that's...
No, not at all. No.
Something a little elevated, a little, a botanical theme is really, I think, a great concept.
Totally botanical, all palette of greens. The idea is to include the structures into the landscaping.
Thank you so much. Excited, love to see something.
Yeah, of course, yes.
Thank you so much for the presentation. We have some public speakers. We have Ari Steiger for this item, for twelve A. This is for this item, correct?
I think that we're going to need public statements from the PAC regarding this resolution or whatever. And as I know, the city of Matanya, which is the sister city of Sunny Isles, they have those, and there's nothing but graffiti on top of it everywhere. They have those electric boxes and the AT&T boxes, whatever they are. The overpasses, there's graffiti that they cannot get rid of it. Once they paint it, next week, again, they have graffiti on top of it. I don't think we have any graffiti in the city, and we don't need any graffiti coming.
Okay. Jerry Joseph?
Hello, Jerry Joseph, one eighty-five sixty North Bay Road. I was questioning, does anyone have an idea what this rendering, you know, this proposal might cost?
We did get some, we did get some quotes. So again, we're in the process of painting the underline right now, right? We were in the...
You mean painting it gray?
Blue-gray.
For maintenance?
I think FDOT is doing some work right now, but this is a new concept. So right now, it's open for you all to discuss and then give us some direction on coming back. I don't, there's not a set budget.
I was just trying to understand what a ballpark might be for a project like this.
Javier, you have a, you've already...
Hi, how are you?
I want to say first, as a statement, that the Public Art Trust Fund has nine-hundred thousand dollars in the bank account. So we have our trust account fund to use for this job.
Now, this is city money?
For the Art Trust Fund.
Yes.
From the city.
Yeah, from the city, correct. Okay. Now, has anyone asked around if there are local artists that might for free display their art and to do this, work with you to do this?
Can we ask, can we ask that you speak into the mic?
Yes.
And then, you know, go through the mayor?
Yes.
And then she'll, so that we, because we're recording it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So I was wondering if anyone has thought that a proposal might be put out for a local artist who might want to work with the city to display their work for free and work on a project such as this? You might have a lot of people that are willing to do this, just to have their art displayed, you know, the final project.
So for me, I'm, I don't know, I don't know too many people who are going to do it for free. But putting that aside, I think the idea is to get a high-quality commissioned artist who, you know, who has some experience and some portfolio and has some, can give a, you know, a vision and some perspective.
Well, but you don't know unless you ask.
I don't know, Julie, Julia, what do you think? Will you do it for free? Will you take your paintbrush out there? Okay. Get a school project. I mean, it's not a school project, but as I see it. But again, you know, I'm one of five, so I don't know. It's not, to me, it's not a sixth-grade project.
I didn't, I wasn't talking about a sixth-grade project. I think that's, you know, diminishing what I was talking about.
Well, you're asking if somebody's going to do it for free. If you think that somebody's going to paint the entire underline of the Bill Lehman Bridge and all the transformer boxes and the entire underline of eight twenty-six causeway, I'd love to know who that person is, but, who would do all that work for free. But putting that aside, you know, hopefully we'll have a unified or a uniform aesthetic or vision or art quality for this. I mean, I think that's, in some ways, that's the beauty and the merit and the value of the PAC, that we, as a respective body, the commissioners, we don't have that, we don't have that aesthetic or that experience or that knowledge about art. That's why we, that's why we've always, why we've had a PAC and why it's been successful, to help vet and make those, make those decisions or, you know, have that input.
So when the discussion was made regarding the artwork in the, in City Hall, that makes all that noise? uh, that makes all that noise that no one is happy about, are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
No.
On the wall, the click, click, click.
Oh, you mean that, um?
Yes. How much was that, $80,000 or something?
I don't believe it was $80,000, but.
How much was it? Maybe higher.
I'm sorry, we're.
Maybe $60,000, something like that?
We're going, we're, we're going beyond the scope of this particular item, but.
No, because I, the point I'm getting at is for something like that, that I had opposed, we could have had local artists displaying their work every month for free, just to have their work out there, as opposed to spending 60 or 70,000 on a piece of art that even your employees that sit in the city hall can't live with the noise.
Okay, well, we're, we're really focused on this botanical and underline concept. We're not focused on what's in the front.
So I'm just trying to put it out there.
I don't view it as a debacle, but you're certainly entitled to your, your opinion. But thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Do we have any, no others, public speakers? So, again, this is a discussion item. I think it's a, it's timely and, um, happy to see some, some, bringing some, uh, aesthetic to the, to the city in our public spaces.
I have to say that I love the botan, the botanical theme. It really aligns with being a green city and many municipalities have their own themes, so this would be a great opportunity for us.
So Mayor, your direction to staff is to explore these opportunities with the PAC and bring something back to you?
Absolutely, bring back some proposal or, or renderings or budget and so forth, some, some additional.
Next step, wanna be to bring a scope of work with a budget in order to get approval and move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, we had one speaker card, but I, it's Jody Joseph, is that, did you, were you looking to speak on this item or that's for something else? Cause we're, we, okay, well then, we'll, you could speak on the other item, cause we're, we're about to, unless. Okay, go ahead. But again, we're, we're clear, we have a clear direction, um, to, to bring back, to bring back the proposal and, you know, artists and scope of work and budget, right? We're, we have a clear directive, okay. State your name, address.
18560 North Bay Road.
Okay.
I'm just a little confused as to $800,000 budget, but we don't know how much of that money we're going to be charged for the artwork. And I'm just wondering, I know we had a similar discussion about the, um, Aquilina, where they made a mistake and stamped off the work too quickly, and now it's a mandatory garage that must be built, it's gonna be 10 stories. And it was pretty much the same discussion, that it's gonna be beautiful with jewels and green, greenery, but no matter what, it's still a garage. There are so many other areas, for instance, do we know who painted, um, the artwork, the mural in Hallendale? Does anybody know that? Did we find out what that price was? Just to be fair and shop around, I mean, instead of just, you know, fixated on one company. And I'm just curious, is this the same company that did the Winterfest? Do they have something to do with the Winterfest?
I don't.
Jody.
Something immediate, we had like no time to make up our mind on that with the millions that that had cost, but I'm just saying it's beautiful. We all love artwork, but, um, there's nothing wrong with getting different bids. And some people may be willing to not charge, just to have their artwork displayed. And as we speak about in the city, there's some incredibly downy people, so to downplay that now is kind of a contradiction. So I just think it's fair, if we could get beautiful artwork at half the price, why not? So that's just, um, a suggestion I have.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item 12B.
Yes, 12B is a discussion regarding advisory committees by Vice Mayor Viscar.
So we already had a, a, I don't, you know, earlier on, particular committees, but I wanted to hear from the commission if there were, um, other committees that perhaps you have been thinking about, or, or if there's other topics that, um, that you would like to consider. Myself, I, um, I, I, I had two that I was thinking about. One of them is if and when we get a teen space, I'd like to see a, like a, uh, maybe some high schoolers or maybe our school government kids have like a teen advisory, uh, board to kind of get their, their input, what would they like to see in that space. But of course, that's, that's down the road that, um, but I'd like to see something like that, starting to, to foster that civic engagement among the young, the young people. And, um, and I was also thinking about possibly having a, like a legislative advocacy committee, allowing residents and modeling for them or assisting them in, in supporting legislation or maybe giving them summaries of things along the lines, Alex, of what, what you do for us when you go to the, the legal cities and you bring us back to the summaries and we say, oh, we support it, or you should support it, but then, uh, maybe it stays there for a lot of us and maybe we can help the, um, the community in actively supporting legislation that would impact us in, in this city, you know, on issues.
Vice Mayor, could you just grab your microphone, please?
Of course, and I, my mic is off, of course. So, so those were ideas that I, that I have, the, the, um, teen advisory and the, um, like a legislative advocacy or some version of that. And I, I thought maybe you guys would have ideas too and we can discuss so that down the road, uh, we can bring those either as different advisory committees or something else, perhaps a fact-finding, um, issue, so that it's not advisory. So I, I give you the floor.
No, I like those two. I think the teen one, uh, you know, it's needed, especially, you know, we're thinking down the road of creating some sort of teen center. And then, uh, the one for legislative, let's say advocacy will be good. Uh, I would add something, you know, that, you know, for the elderly perhaps, you know, I do get a lot of calls and they need help with different subjects. I still don't have a clear idea, um, you know, perhaps we could help them with different issues in their condos or, you know, different issues pertaining to, you know, um, I don't know, anything that has to do with, with whatever they, we could help them with regarding city issues or state or county issues. Perhaps some, have some people that could perhaps help them and talk to them and guide them, because a lot of times I feel like they just don't know how to, who to, who to go to, they don't have resources, they don't know what number to call. So I think that will be something to, to, to help, you know, if we could just help them out that way, uh.
And maybe instead of committee, some of these things can be addressed through, through a workshop forum. Maybe it's not committee material, but we can, we can open up, maybe create a, um,
Yeah.
A dialogue in, in terms of workshops.
And even to discuss, you know, certain things, you know, like some, some events perhaps, they could give us some feedback. I know we have the, uh, the senior center, but perhaps they could give us some, some feedback on, on what they would like to see. And, uh, even with the committee, how we could help them with different issues that they face, uh, at that age, you know? So I think that'll be good.
I mean, they have, um, there, there was a, there's an ombudsman kind of for the elderly. I think that's at the state level or they had that in the past, but that's a little different from a committee that actually does fact-finding or makes recommendations. It's more of a staff or, or workshop. I don't know that that fits neatly into a, a committee format, so to speak. Like, what is it, a committee on the elderly? Or, I'm not sure what their, you know, what their portfolio, I mean.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'll find out. I think it's more like to, if they're having, if there's elderly abuse or things of that nature from a state level.
Right, so they have, I think, right, they have an elder abuse hotline and I think there's an ombudsman for the elderly.
No, I was thinking more like everyday type of issues, maybe they have, I don't know, issues, they don't know how to, their building's not communicating with them, or they, they just need help with, you know, getting transportation and they don't know that the county could probably supply that, so, that, that type of help. You know, very simple things that for them, you know, they, they just, sometimes they don't know who to go to, so. I still don't have it clear, but I think that, you know, something that we could help them out.
Aging with dignity program, something that they can call and they have resources.
Listen, I have this issue, do you know who to call? And, and for us, it's probably just going on Google and, and giving them the number, but for them, it's, it's just difficult, so, yeah.
Yes, and the teen one is amazing.
I, I really like that.
And with teenagers from the high schools where they get together and say like, what are they, what they want, how they get it, et cetera. I love it.
Because we have, we, obviously we have the school here, but, uh, we, we have high schoolers and, you know, it'd be nice to, to engage them as well and, and, you know, help them transition into, into responsible adults. We had had that, um, one of the ideas was like a teen green. I don't know if that intersects with sustainability, but something like a teen, teen ambassadors or teen green and some of the, some of the initiatives that the teens, but I think that's a great, I like that a lot. I think that could be a really robust.
Down the road, I think it would be, I mean, something to keep our eye on.
Absolutely, it's something that would be extremely beneficial, extremely beneficial.
Any other comments? All right, thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. Next item, 12C.
12C is a discussion regarding a space needs assessment.
So, that's also me. I don't have a report to give, but I wanted to, uh, see if we can get an update on, uh, we, we requested a feasibility study, we kind of touched on it earlier tonight regarding, you know, what we would do with these spaces, where, if anywhere we could put a new police station or what's the best way to deal with that? And it was supposed to go out to bid. This was what, like back in June?
Yes, so the update is we received three bids as of November 30th, 2021. So currently the staff is reviewing those bids and we expect to bring something back to you in January for your consideration.
Okay, great. Are we discussing the, the, um, the other, the space, the Navarro space or not at this point?
We, we can if you like.
Not the Navarro, the other, the other portion. The Ternary.
No.
Not yet.
I don't think that's a commission issue, I think it's administrative.
Okay.
When we come back to discuss the feasibility, we'll also have, make it part of a larger discussion, because some of you have asked me for a list of city-owned properties, so I'll make that a combo discussion at that time.
Wonderful, okay. Are we, any other? No, that's, that's all. Okay, great, okay. Uh, next item, 12C.
12D, Mayor.
12D.
That's a discussion regarding an ordinance to ban balloon releases.
Okay. I would like to start, I would like to start by reminding everyone that Sunny Isles Beach is an eco-committed city, and this is something that we should be proud of. I know I am. This city campaign is based on promoting and fostering eco-friendly and eco-driven adjustments that everyone can make in their daily lives to help save our local environment and the planet. As beautiful as it may seem to honor someone or to host an event with an intentional balloon rees, release, we must understand that this act poses a real threat to our wildlife, marine life, and our environment. What goes up must come down somewhere. Let's continue our path to being eco-committed and use our media department to educate and bring awareness to negative impact of balloon releases. Let's be part of the solution, just like many other municipalities who have introduced ordinances banning intentional balloon releases. Let's partner with organizations like the Miami Dade Sea Turtles and the Pelican Harbor Seabird Station and invite them to our city with the purpose of educating us all and how we can be better stewards to our environment and in making our home safer for everyone, including our sea turtles and marine life.
Very well, very, very important to move every eco-committed initiative forward. Thank you.
Just a step on the right edge.
Is the county have it in place already? Do we know? I don't know why I thought we already had.
There's state, there's a state law in several municipalities, although none abutting us, uh, has, Hollywood has one, I know for a fact.
The county doesn't have one?
Uh, don't, no, I don't think so.
I mean, it doesn't matter, we can, even if we do one, we can do belts and suspenders, but I don't know why I thought we already had it.
Yeah, the, the issue though is that all of those are doing as, um, criminal offenses, and so we'd have to pay for prosecution of, of violation of this code. It wouldn't be code enforcement, it would be, um, criminal violation.
I think that for my purposes of introducing it, it's more on an educational basis. And again, it's about being eco-committed, having the conversation, teaching our children, bringing in all of these organizations that are already working within our city and our county and, um, being part of that solution basis.
So is there a direction then? Are we? Are we gonna, wanna see what this ordinance would look like, or can we do an ordinance?
Will of the commission, what would you like us to draft?
Correct, there are ordinances from other municipalities.
Okay, so your direction is for us to bring you back an ordinance, um, of some type in January? Okay. Thank you.
Right, not only is it the latex, the plastic, it's the string, you know, this is, it's, it's common sense, we need to really just acknowledge it and, and be a leader also.
Okay, we will do it.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, um, 12E, add-on.
Okay. I have added the discussion item regarding the crosswalk at 189th Street and Collins Avenue, after one of our residents posted it in one of the Sunny Isles Beach Facebook groups. First of all, I would like to thank all of the resident, residents who have relentlessly, relentlessly advocated for pedestrian safety. As a resident and newly appointed commissioner, I share the same frustration and wanted to make this one, one of the first issues I introduced for discussion with fellow commissioners. Due to inaction in the past, our pedestrian safety issue has become complex and multi-leveled. We must have detailed conversations if we are to implement real effective solutions to improve safety. I am committed to ensure we have the focused conversations we need on this issue at the municipal level to ensure we implement effective solutions to improve safety. I hope we can have a productive dialogue and look forward to hearing from each one of my colleagues, as I know we are all committed to improving public pedestrian street safety for our residents. Aside from addressing this specific crosswalk with our city manager, I have requested we follow up with our police department to assure we increase police presence, that we continue to work with FDOT to ensure that we stay on schedule in delivering the traffic signal, and that we direct our media department to help educate and bring awareness to our community on our traffic laws and danger zones. I'd like to invite our chief of police.
Good evening. Well, first and foremost, I want to clarify that the crosswalk that we're talking about in question is 189th Street and Collins Avenue, and the police department and the city alike totally agree that that intersection is dangerous, that crosswalk. We're not denying that. It was opposed three years ago when DOT put it in. At this point, I know it's been in the city manager's office for several years, working on this to come up with a resolution to it. I think we're getting close to it now, and I know the residents that have been bringing it to our attention, they've been, they've been advocates for probably the last year strongly on this same issue. We've gone out there trying to find the best way we can keep the residents safe until we come up with this resolution. It's dangerous, it is dangerous. We had our motor units out there trying to figure out a way we can try to enforce some of the rules and laws out there. It's dangerous for them as well as it is for the residents crossing. Sergeant Javier Estes, as you guys met this morning, or this afternoon, um, he's gone out there recently and did his own study and tried to figure out a way we can make it sa, as safe as possible until they come up with this resolution. And I'll let him speak on that in a minute. It's a, it's a little detour of a walk, but it avoids that dangerous intersection. We did, I believe Susan Simpson made contact with the consultant that's handling this for. for us, and they did confirm that the mast arm is what we're waiting for to be able to put traffic lights up there. It is on order, it's been on order, but because like everything else, everything's taken forever. But they did confirm that they anticipate the delivery of this mast arm sometime in March for an installation in the beginning of April. I know, again, the resident they're referring to, that she's also been in contact with DOT, and they confirmed with her also that they're going to be installing it in April. So I think we're getting close, but and I'll let Sergeant Estes explain the option to the crosswalk right now that might hopefully take a little bit of the danger away.
Good evening again. The option that he's referring to, basically what I did was I went over there, surveyed everything, and in order, I guess, to mitigate the problem that we have there, that we've been, if you really look at it, if it was my family, I wouldn't cross the street there. It's very dangerous. There's, it's unique in a way because we have a lot of people that come through the city that live here, that take that same path, they're used to getting on the layman, and it almost invites you to speed up as you get on the layman. So there's no light there northbound. When you look at the southbound side, it's real safe. It's the other world. So you have one world on this side that it's kind of a disaster, and one world on the other side, southbound, which is what we're hoping to get on the north end. What I did was I stood on the east side, walked north towards Ocean Two, and there's an area there you can cross. And then I went around and just walked down the sidewalk. Took me six minutes and 20-some seconds versus 30 seconds just going across. I mean, it's just, it's the safest way to do it if you're gonna go anywhere north, if you're coming that way. That being said, as I was out there and I crossed the way intended by FDOT, where they put the crosswalks, I had a car slam on its brakes, and I was wearing the full uniform, my boots and everything. I mean, you know, I had a car slam on its brakes, all the cars ended up stopping, but it's difficult, even with the state statute. When you read the state statute, it's the pedestrian walkway statute, it's 316130 and the subsection that goes, subsection seven. And the state statute clearly states, the pedestrian has to be in the walkway in order to enforce it. So to give you an idea of what I'm talking about, that's more geared towards crosswalks. For example, when we're leaving here, we go to 183rd, make a right and then a left to go north on Collins. The way it's written in the statute, if the pedestrian is in the crosswalk and has already entered the crosswalk, there's a section that says, once they're on the half where the cars are traveling, the cars need to stop. In this case, the pedestrians are there and they're pressing the button for the light, and the misconception comes where they think the cars are gonna stop with yellow or amber lights, as they call it, for the state. According to state law, and I have that there and I can give you the subsection and everything for it, red lights, stop, yellow light, caution. In order for that to get cars to stop, it has to be red. I can't write a ticket, or we can't write a ticket, to someone who goes through the yellow. I basically have to wait for someone to be in the crosswalk. And it sounds terrible, but it's just a reality. The way would work, in theory, the best way, one vehicle stops to let the pedestrian enter the crosswalk, and when the other vehicle takes that lane and goes, I can stop and cite that vehicle according to the way the state law is written. So we use it a lot, we're familiar with it from when we do our pedestrian enforcement details. It's just, it doesn't give the pedestrian the opportunity to enter the crosswalk safely, and they have the false sense that those lights are gonna get the cars to stop, and they don't. So in theory, if you're a pedestrian, you're pressing the light and a car keeps going through, and there's no one in the crosswalk, I can't stop and cite it based on the way the law is written. There's a lot of ambiguity in that law. And like he said, and he was telling you before, going around, and once we get that red light there, it's gonna make all the difference in the world. But for right now, it's just, it's very difficult. I just wanted you guys to understand what we do, why we can and can't in certain things. You guys have any questions for me or anything?
So I was approached by a resident this past weekend that said in Washington DC, they have not red light cameras, but speeding cameras, and I guess they're legal there. And I'm under the impression that you, it's not, it's not, there's a proposed bill to make those illegal in school zones, but it's not the law. So we don't, in Florida, we don't have the right to install speeding cameras, basically where you position cameras and they can catch you for speeding.
As of right now, I've never, I've never heard of that. I've seen them, I've seen them in Europe, to be quite honest.
In DC, they have them all over, according to this resident. Why can't we get them here? And I just don't know that there's any legal precedent for that.
Correct. They'd have to come from the state, the state will have to approve, and then we can only enforce what the state says we can approve. But, I mean, it's a great idea. I've seen it in Europe, and it's funny, you'll be driving down the expressway in Europe and then everybody slows down, and you're like, why they slow down? Oh, there's cameras. It's just, you know, it's not, it's a great idea, but again, the state would have to pass it.
Because that would be a perfect location for a speeding camera.
Even the speeding, a car going 40 miles an hour hits someone. I mean, we lived it last year, unfortunately. And speed's not, I, a lot of you have seen me on the layman causeway, we parked there and people are like, oh, it's real dangerous. It's the best place for us to get people speeding. They can't really see us, so they anticipate all the time that we're there, especially in the morning hours. And we can also watch that pedestrian walkway if they violate somebody's right of way. Believe it or not, as they're getting to the bottom of the causeway, as they're coming up the ramp, the majority car, the majority of cars really aren't going that fast, but we just need people to stop so people can cross the street. And I think with the way that's set up now from FDOT, it's just not safe.
I think that's very telling, and it's important that we communicate that and bring that awareness to our community so that way they know, because they are under that false sense of, you know, security, safety, that once they press it and the lights are going off, that they can walk into, you know, onto the street. And the reality is.
And the same thing at 163rd, I mean, even that, that's a blind corner.
You read my mind.
And again, we have a lot of people who come here from other countries. There's, we'll see a car make a U-turn on a red light, and I'll tell you, that's probably 80% of those people are Colombian. Nothing against Colombian people. It's legal in Colombia to make a U-turn on a red light. We stop them in, like Colombia, and they go, yeah, how did you know? And I'm like, uh, U-turn on a red light. It's just, we, there's so many different people that come into the city and from working on the street, you get to know all, you know, when we used to stop people in, well, when I used to stop people on 172nd and North Bay, there I go, I'm staying at the hotel, and you're like, the hotel? And they're like, oh, you mean intercostal. It's just all these different things that you get to learn, and you deal with a lot of people who really don't know the laws here. And the easiest way is, red light, stop, let people cross. Yellow lights, what does that mean? What does that mean?
How traffic does that crosswalk as opposed to some of the other crosswalks? I mean, I know people have advocated for like public service aides or PSAs, crosswalk guards or things, you know, as some sort of a, you know, what makes that crosswalk any, you know, in need of that or any different from any of the other crosswalks?
It's, we didn't, we didn't have that before at that crosswalk on 189th. That's not, that's relative. When, you remember when it went up? Yeah, we never had that. So before that, and I mean, I've been on motors here for a long time, I deal with a lot of traffic issues. We never had that before, and then once they put it in, we all kind of just sat there going, wait a second, this isn't gonna work. What are you guys doing?
Why did they put it in there? That's such a dangerous area. I know the city was opposed to that even implementing that to go across.
You were saying about the service aides, I mean, we looked at that. We even looked at taking one of our motorists and dedicating them to putting them there. It's just a dangerous intersection. Putting them out there is putting them as much harm's way as the residents. They, matter of fact, I was out there for a half hour today. I parked my car there and just watched, and it's crazy. And I saw people start to cross and same thing, these cars don't stop. Doesn't, he said he did it in a uniform. They don't realize who he is, they're gonna run him over just as quick. They don't, it's, I don't wanna say human nature, but when you're driving and you're about to enter a highway, first thing you think is to head south, because you're gonna get onto a highway. So these people are trained to go faster, and they don't know, I mean, the lights are flashing on two signs off to the side. There's nothing across the street, that little extra, it's nothing, it's just two signs that light up and don't tell people to stop.
Chief, but the only solution or tool that we have right now is enforcement, because like you said, the project is gonna be March, April next year. So the only thing we can, that we have right now in our hands is you guys. So it's you guys, the only ones that can help us, like overnight, because the other solution is gonna be overtime.
No, I completely agree, and we're not, I don't want, I don't want you to think I'm telling you, oh, we're not gonna enforce it. That's not what I'm saying at all. I want you to understand, when I'm sitting on the motorcycle and I'm waiting, it's like a stop sign, I gotta wait for you to run the stop sign to write you a stop sign ticket. The red light, I gotta wait for you to take a red light to write your red light ticket. Unfortunately, with this, I have to wait till a pedestrian is in the crosswalk, whether it's a foot or whatever, for me to ride that car. This isn't, when you're leaving 183rd, going back to my previous point, you're coming from a standstill and starting to turn left, what speed could your car be traveling at? This is from a car that's coming at 35, 40, 45 miles an hour, and you want them to stop for, but it's just, it doesn't make sense.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
And I want you to know, I would, any, being a motorman, we write tickets, that's our livelihood. I have it in my head when I leave, oh, I gotta write tickets, I gotta, you know, it's just the way we're programmed. If that, if that particular intersection gave us, yielded X number ticket, my guys would be out there all day. It's just, really, the way it's written. And what'll happen is, you know, we have some attorneys up here, we go to court, Your Honor, what does the law say? Well, they have to be in the intersection. Officer was a person in the intersection? No, they ran the yellow light, case is missed, case thrown out. I mean, I want you to understand why it is that we do.
The speed limit on the top is 15, right?
The speed limit on the top, on our side, it's 45, and then it's 55 in Aventura.
No, 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 on the top of the causeway, when you're going to like Aventura.
Okay, when you, when you're going up on the causeway, you'll see the speed limit sign is also yellow.
Correct.
And that yellow means that it's a suggested speed from the state. It's so you can negotiate the curve.
But it's 15 or 25?
We write it as 35. The court always looks at anything above 35, because the yellow is what FDOT is telling you. Anytime you see a sign with a yellow background, not the white, it's the suggested FDOT. So we write, whenever we write a ticket, they're like, if you're going up the ramp and you're going 55, I'll write you 55 and 35. The yellow is what they suggest for you to be able to negotiate that curve. But that's why you see the sign, but we don't write it under that, we write it under 35.
Okay.
So, so what's the feasibility of, you talked about reconfiguring that crossing, right? Where it will take people more time, obviously, but that's FDOT. So how, what's the feasibility? We can reconfig, how soon can we reconfigure that?
The more time is now. You don't have to reconfigure it. It's there. You just walk north to Ocean Two, there's a crosswalk there, you hit the button, you cross the two lanes.
Okay. How can we get people to follow that? Okay, all right. And then perhaps put some signage where people are directed to cross from there?
And that was another thing, was the signage. If, again, I don't know the legal parameters that we have to add a sign over there, to make it like a deterrent for people to cross, and that's where F.
Cross at your own risk, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's a challenge. It really is. But maybe we should go back to FDOT and tell them, you know, maybe this false sense of security and the blinking lights is telling them to, you know, proceed, so maybe.
They look back after the last three years on this, they, we've given them every reason why that thing there.
Maybe we should pressure to remove.
They're doing their thing, we're finding it to the point where it's getting close, so as long as they keep their word, then we're looking at it, we'll do ours.
But again, going back to before we had that, it was never an issue. We didn't have it. People had to cross this way.
So we need to remove it. We need to remove the lights.
Remove it or get a red light. I mean, I guess they're gonna have.
The red light is gonna come.
The red light is coming, yeah.
But until, yes.
Enforcement, in the meantime, like I said, right now, they.
If it's my kids and my family, and I've told that to one family that lives up there, we had an accident up there, I said, can I be honest with you? And I guess, I wouldn't let my kids cross it. I go, I take a six-minute walk, and that's six minutes to go up and back. I mean, I think six minutes.
Long time ago, you used to put one police car that was empty, but it was on the west side, in the westbound, yeah.
Right. The problem now too is, we've also looked into putting signage there. I have it on, if you go north at about 185th, you'll see one of our electronic signs, message boards.
Okay.
I can't put it in the apex, because if I put it in the apex, I'm blocking that sign, and now liability falls on us if, God forbid, something happens. So the best place to put it where it wasn't blocking the blinking lights was at 185th Street where it's at now. And, you know, I mean, we're trying, but it's just, it's so difficult.
Mayor, I was just gonna say, I think we've heard the concerns, and I think it's important that we discussed it, because I wanted the residents, I think the Commissioner wanted the residents to know, what action are we taking? And I think you can tell by what the police department has told us, they've taken the time to physically walk the intersection themselves. So from an enforcement perspective, that's going to continue. We've, like Mike said, we've been in contact with FDOT as late as this week. Susan mentioned to me that the update was, it's supposed to be here by March of 2022, but to your point, if we can do more work with media, and meanwhile, we'll do the best that we can regarding the enforcement. But the message is clearly that it is a dangerous intersection, and we're gonna do everything we can to try to help keep the residents safe.
At some point, are we gonna advocate to, I mean, if that red light, if our mast arm, if it's not effective, are we gonna advocate at some point to?
It should be effective.
You think it's gonna be effective?
It's gonna be a red light.
Well, you have it in the Hollendale Beach ramp, when you're going from Collins onto Hollendale, they have a light there, it's beautiful.
That's, that's exactly right. When you're going north and you're gonna get Hollendale to go west, it's very similar to what we have. It's one lane, then two, and then the two lanes on the side. It's almost identical, and it works.
It's beautiful.
So you think the problem will be solved once we get this?
Problems will never solve.
It'll be better, it'll just be better.
It will help. Not only that, it'll also slow down the cars.
Correct. Because they know there is a red light there coming, so it's gonna change.
So we can't push them any faster? That, it is what it is. It's March, April, that's what's gonna happen.
Yeah. We're finally at the final stretch, and hopefully everything comes on time now.
Okay.
But can we keep an eye on it? Because we don't want March to become April, and April to become June, and then June becomes December, you know? So like, FDOT needs to know that we really mean business, and we want that like yesterday. Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Our discussion, the next discussion item on proactive community policing.
Mayor, we had a public speaker.
Oh, okay. Aha, Pavel, lest we forget, Pavel.
Pavel Stoichov.
Actually, we have a couple here. Go ahead, go ahead.
Pavel Stoichov, 17145 North Bay Road. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Goldman, honorable Commissioners and City Staff. I actually had two comments, but I'll speak first on this item of this crosswalk, a very dangerous crosswalk. And I have another dimension to this situation as a driver. I often drive up to the crosswalk and I see the light blinking. I see the people trying to cross, but they're not crossing because they see the cars coming. They are afraid to put their foot into, onto the crosswalk, which is the requirement for enforcement, but they're still afraid. I stop, and immediately I start looking back into my rearview mirrors and my heart starts skipping. Either I see a car coming real fast in the left lane, and I start thinking to myself, do I swerve to the left to try to protect the pedestrians, put myself in danger and prevent the situation or cause a bigger accident? Or do I just do nothing and hope these people don't cross and see that car coming? Or I see a car coming right behind me really fast and I hope that they stop. So I think if we cannot do anything more to push for faster red light, which probably would solve that situation, perhaps we can push FDOT, maybe they'll do that faster, come out and remove this thing until a red light can be put in place.
Yeah.
Because it's just an accident waiting to happen there. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Joseph, did you want to speak on this item? Name and address for the record.
Yes, Jerry Joseph, 185 60 North Bay Road.
I just want to say for the record that I've been working on this, um, one hundred and eighty-ninth street and Collins, uh, red light issue since August of this year. Prior to, uh, the city signing off on, uh, the contract with FDOT to actually have the masked arm produced. At the time I got involved, uh, uh, the city manager had not signed off. It was just in limbo. I don't know how much longer it would have sat there like that. Stan, did you, uh, were you involved, uh, with that project at that time?
I was not, but I am now.
Right. So prior to August of this year, the, uh, the contract for the mask arm had not been signed off by the city. Apparently there was, um, a change order that had not been signed and FDOT was waiting for that. Once I had letters back and forth with Stacy Miller and Jennifer Burgos, the two P's at FDOT. Apparently the city signed what they had to. And, um, the, uh, construction went to the contractor to have the mask arm, uh, put into production. I posted all of my letters and even the current configuration of what will be when the mask arm is installed, um, online for anyone to see. And I'll do that again, but, um, the, uh, the installation date as of now is March, April of two thousand twenty-two. Another idea I had is if anyone's been to, uh, near the Apple Store at Abertura Mall, they have a crossing guard with whistles that there, that, um, street there is quite active and dangerous. Uh, that's the reason that they do have a crossing guard with a sign and a whistle. And I believe that would be a good interim, um, you know, stopgap until this light is installed. So you, you might wanna consider that as well.
Thank you. Okay. Are we, next item?
If there's no other cars, then I believe then we can move to the next item, which is discussion regarding proactive community policing.
All right. The discussion item regarding proactive community policing is in reference to the bullying and the after-school scheduled fights occurring in our city. Sadly enough, for years now, parents have been sending me recorded videos of our schoolchildren partaking in violent behavior. It seems that some of our middle school kids are scheduling a meeting at different locations around town to fight and then posting videos of these fights onto social media platform, further spreading and exponentially increasing the damaging impact of these horrific events. As a mother of two young children, it has been painful to watch these videos and alarming to constantly hear about our children getting bullied. It is even more concerning when this behavior becomes violent and viral. I believe we must take every action we can to address this issue to ensure our community is aware of the problem at all levels. I'd like to thank our mayor, Dana Goldman, for the proclamation on National Bullying Awareness Month in October and for inviting our honorable school board member, Lucia Baez-Geller. She spoke on behalf of the school board and to further look into result-driven decisions and solutions that will help our children within the school. As a commissioner, I wanted to bring this to, this to the attention of our city and I hope we can unite everyone behind the common goal to prevent this type of abusive behavior. I believe having this discussion will benefit us all and I admit I do not have all the solutions, but I do look forward to a discussion amongst my colleagues on the days. And I will share some of the thoughts, ideas, updates, and concerns I have. I'm asking our parents and city to get and remain involved so that we can all collectively do our part to address this issue. This discussion item will hopefully be the beginning of an ongoing community effort with the main purpose of preventing these attacks before ever happening. When possible, we should do everything we can to be there and take action before it happens. I will continue these efforts with the Norman Auto Cup K three principal and counselor to see how we can best help to support them and our children while in and out, outside of the school. School Board Representative Lucia Baez-Geller has provided me an update on two important designations within our school. No Place For Hate and Restorative Justice School. I will be joining her onsite and I invite anybody on the days to join me as well and her to learn firsthand about the plans that and the action to embed an inclusive environment through teachers, staff, and student training on conflict resolution and in building strong relationships that cultivate and advance equity, support, counseling, and more. I'm looking forward to continuing my conversations with our city manager, assistant city manager, to create an after-school safe haven and teen recreational center within our city, which we've spoken about. I also hope to work with our city staff, including Sylvia Flores, and alongside our police department in exploring how we can launch a police youth program such as Police Explorers. I am confident that as, as a community, our parents, residents, and fellow government officials will be able to brainstorm, identify, and advance additional solutions so we can do our part in ensuring our children have a safe educational environment so that our next generations may flourish. Let us not forget that it begins at home. It takes a village and we must be the example for our youth. Welcome any comments.
Important topic, important issue, and important for support, our policing and so forth. And these incidents are occurring and they can't be swept under the rug.
I have a couple of comments. Um, first of all, our children, especially middle schoolers, are full of energy. And our school has not a recess. They have no recess. They are there from eight in the morning, eight twenty, until three P M without recess. When I was in school, I had two recesses, but a long time ago.
Is that physical, physical education do they have?
No, they have P E, but not everybody. And now, obviously, not every day. And middle schoolers, they don't have to have P E. You can opt out. So that's, P E was when they had a little bit more of the opportunity to burn all that excess of energy. Also, right now, because of COVID, they are not also in the cafeteria. Now all the classes can't go to the cafeteria, which was another moment where they could socialize. So imagine these kids confined in that building for so many hours, then they come out. We had the issue also of many kids that don't live here in Sonny House, so they have to wait for their parents to come pick them up around the city. So it is not only like one issue, but I believe it's a combination of many issues. Also, um, I like the idea of the, I don't know how you call it, but I put in my notes the idea of a cadet program and bring especially the bad kids to that program. So maybe we can turn some bad kid that used to be bad and then into work with you guys in law enforcement, you know?
And, um- For the record, I was part of the Police Explorers program and was not a bad kid. But it, but it was a great program and it was a great way of learning discipline, the law, being able to ride with the police officers, being able to be inside of the police station. It gave me a sense of responsibility. Um, it got me much more involved within the community. And they really instill such a large mentorship program that they are, you know, instilling just the qualities and the characteristics for these children to go back into their community and instill that as well there.
And my last point, it was about the teen center. We need some kind of infrastructure for our children, for our teenagers especially. Tennis courts, basketball courts, something outdoors, not to put like, they need to be out of the classroom into activities that allow them to socialize, to play, and to burn that excess of energy. We need to think a little bit outside the box and I've been in contact with staff about that. And hopefully, in the near future, we can bring some ideas to discuss here to help our teenagers because it's just mental health. You cannot be only about school and the FSA and having good grades for the school to be grade A. They need to run, they need to play, sometimes they need to fight, you know? So I have four children, so I'm a little bit used to that. So, yeah, we need to do anything to help them, okay?
Well, I, I think, I think Susan and Sylvia both had great programs going on for a while and COVID interrupted that. But I think we're getting back in the swing of things where their programs are gonna start going again. But one of the things the commissioner said was, uh, the, our problem is, if these parents, they have to police their own kids. They're posting things on social media and our biggest, our biggest, uh, problem is TikTok. Everyone wants to do TikTok challenges. And a lot of these fights, and we, we had, um, we went back and searched our records from the start of the school year. We only had one reported incident of a school fight, which was just last Monday. And it was reported. Our, our sergeant went over and immediately notified a school resource officer. They identified the kids right away. Apparently there's a new, uh, assistant principal at the school and I apologize, I don't know his name, but he supposedly takes a hard stance. And these kids were brought in the same day, identified, uh, and suspended from school that quick. So he's not playing around, but we got, back to our see something, say something. I mean, that's important. These parents have to police their children and call us. I mean, it's a lot better for their kids to face threats on the internet or just stupid comments on the internet than to let them carry out something they're gonna do that could be like changing for them. So, I mean, we need the parents' help on that, I mean. But again, we, we try to monitor and, well, Sergeant, please, come on. He's kind of, he, he's the sergeant oversees the detective bureau. We have counts that we monitor some of these Instagrams and things like that and I'll let him explain to you. We, I mean, we're not a big department. They don't, we don't have a fusion center that can constantly be on there, but you can explain what you do with your Instagram.
Yeah, we do monitor certain locations that are problematic for us and just videos of concern or pictures of concern to follow up on. And, and quite honestly, we haven't seen these specific videos. We were, we did have the reported incident on Monday. It was followed up on and resolved. But again, we just need the community to comment and make us aware, right, so we can respond, respond quickly and effectively. So it would help us out greatly.
Yeah, I agree. You know what? I, I do receive so many videos and the children know about this because they're getting scheduled. It's, it's, it's a, it's a scheduled event. So the children are showing up to see the fighting. And part, that's why I think that Stan came up with this community, you know, proactive policing because it really has to be about the community and everyone, you know, working together. If you see something, you have to say something and we need to work together.
Right. I think in my, in my discussions with the commissioner, I, I also spoke to, uh, the chief. If there's a way that our media department can assist them with some of these things that are getting posted online. I think to your point, a, a lot of what happens with this is it's not getting reported through the police department. It's being done more for social media. So I think if we take a little more, more proactive, uh, approach on the media side, then we can, uh, notify the police and work directly with them and kind of approach it from a different perspective.
So, so just to understand, so there, there's a school police, uh, resource officer and, um, I, I just wanna understand how you work with, with that resource officer? And, um, I wanted to know if we, you said we monitor, but I wasn't sure, are, are we monitoring, uh, social media accounts? Where a lot of these-
I mean, to be honest with you guys, we have fictitious accounts that we've used for numerous investigations over years and years. So, I mean, we've, we've had cases from, you know, gun cases, home invasion robberies, to kids fighting, right? It's just what we see out there. You know, we try to take a proactive role where, you know, we'll notice some sort of criminal activity online and we respond the best we can. So again, the school fights, it's not prevalent on the platforms we're using. So we need help, right? TikTok is, is a challenge and it's, you know, the social media evolves to where it's more cryptic. It's more difficult for us to kind of embed ourselves in that little community and monitor it. So, you know, open suggestions and, you know, what help we can get.
Yeah, I think it's, I think that we need to send a, a strong message to our parents and, and our community that if you know that this is happening and just, yeah, to speak to your children as well and have them also report back and let's all work together.
And as, as far as the school resource officer, she's from the county. You know, a few years back, we, uh, switched out ours for theirs. We've got a great working relationship with her. She's, she's amazing. She's got the trust of a lot of the kids there. And when things like this happen, a lot of times she knows about it and she'll let us know right away and it will saturate that area before it even happens and usually it doesn't happen. But she's got a good rapport with them and we, like I said, we've got a great relationship with her.
An idea that I just have in what about if we make some kind of award for the kids to write an essay about challenge? How sad and stupid it is just to follow a challenge? And that way they can start the conversation, like some kind of award, some kind of reward for them to present us. Like let's think about some rules about it, make it cool and for them, maybe they want to participate and have that conversation. And that really just following a challenge is not worth it. You don't get out of, nothing out of it and being popular in internet is just, it's just, you know? It can be like something nice. With the school, partnering with the school, yes. Yeah, it'll be something nice.
And for, and also what the vice mayor had suggested, the teen advisory. You know, this is something that they can also, you know, take on that accountability and try to resolve it within their community as well.
Yeah, as we get back to the normal, there's a lot of-
But you know why? We gotta get the parents.
Yes, yes.
Because if we don't get them to do anything, it's very, yeah. We gotta get them to step up.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, what I've noticed is the, especially the middle schoolers, they're basically, and I had a conversation with our principal about that last week. They get out of school at three and they're just on the streets. They're literally wandering the streets. Even when I went into the park today, kids are just in the park or they're literally want, wandering the streets. And there's no activities for them. They're just, you know, it's just an opportunity for mischief.
And, and that's the thing I was saying, exactly. The, because they don't have a, a recess, they need to socialize somehow. So they, they get in trouble if they're talking inside the classroom. So they are outside and they're wandering and they go to Starbucks and McDonald's or whatever because they really wanna hang out. And, and they don't have that, that, that option. So we have to help them have also a, a safer space for them to, because I don't think they have it. And I have two teenagers, three teenagers at home, one almost going to college and two middle schoolers here, so. And I want them to have a place where they can feel safe, where they can play, where they can do the things that we all did when we had that age, but they don't have it now, no.
I think the, uh, I think the consensus is already clear. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, I don't, I don't, I don't know how many people have stuck around, stuck around.
So sorry, we had a public speaker that wanted to speak on twelve F.
Twelve. We have, we have Pavel?
Yes.
We have Jerry Pavel. Oh, you wanna speak on this too? Well, you've been very patient, so go ahead.
Pavel Stoyev, one seven one four five North Bay Road. First of all, thank you very much for finally discussing these items that are pertaining to safety. I understand with the previous administration, this was not a discussion that would have been had. Again, thank you for bringing this up, Commissioner Vinaich. And on this specific issue of, of violence amongst our kids, I understand there could be a multitude of, uh, causes why it's happening. But we must do what we can do to, to prevent it, to stop the bullying. And, uh, as the saying goes, it takes a village to raise a child. We're not a village, we're a city, but we're such a tightly, tightly knit community. There are things that we can do. And I really much like the idea of this Police Explorers because, uh, maybe we take the, the kids who are known in, in engaging this kind of behavior and we put them together with our, uh, members of the police force, actual members, and that they can show them proactively what it takes to, to maintain the, the law and the safety in, in the city. If we don't do anything, we, we fail the victim, but we also fail the, the people who instigate this because we must foster, uh, an educational environment so the kids go to school and they feel safe. And it, it, this issue has been swept under the rug for far too long. I understand the school's position is, it didn't happen on the school property, we're not dealing with it. But it probably started in the school environment, this friction or conversations or arguments and then it permeates into, into the city streets. So I, I thank you very much for bringing this issue up and I, I hope we can find a solution. And I very much like the Police Explorers idea. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I want to add something, the, the, the Police Athletic League, that's something else for the kids.
Which is related. It's, it's a related thing that I think, yeah, that we would revisit.
We should be, yeah. I don't know where we are in that, on that process or COVID.
I was, I was thinking about it as this discussion is, is, but I, I think it's, we, we will come back and revisit it and, and again, in connection with, with that conversation of, of a possible teen space that maybe that would, that's a place that could house it, right? Depending on the activities or, you know, it's a place to start, but- to start, but.
We have a lot of fields and stuff.
Yeah.
To start with.
And creating the, and creating those relationships, again, strength, strengthening the, the relationship between the community and the police department and the individual officers. It's all part of that, you know, that, that bridge building that, that we need to do. But, but yeah, I think, I think definitely we all agree that the teenagers, well, they're a fickle group anyway. I mean, they're, you know, if you, you can give them whatever, they'll be like, oh, that's not cool now. I wanted that last month. But all we can do is try. Right?
Absolutely. And I very much appreciate you trying as a, as a father of two school-aged children. Growing up, I, I think we, we can and we must do.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for hanging in there. We have, are we on item 13 yet?
Yes, ma'am.
No, we're not.
I hope we've.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
My, I have my add-on.
Go ahead. Oh, your add-on. Oh, that's right.
So in, in 2018, the city entered into land donation and transfer development, development rights agreement with, with Navarro, where the, the city purchased, or is in the process of purchasing the Navarro pharmacy and liquor store. The total amount of purchase price for that transaction was $15.8 million. Claudia has told me that we've made payments over the years, so now it's down to approximately $12.7 million. In accordance with that contract, we're supposed to have a closing scheduled on or before December 31st. There's just no way that we can get there at this point in time. So all I'm asking is for your authority to allow me to extend the closing for another 30 days, so that we can get the documentation needed, and also an opportunity to speak with finance and the city manager to come up with a plan for either purchasing the, the property outright now by paying off the $12.7 million, or keeping the existing agreement, which makes us, gives us an opportunity to make five equal payments starting this January 1 of 2023. So it's not this coming January. But we, we don't want, we don't want you to make that decision tonight. It's on, we'll bring it back in January with a full explanation of what our recommendation is from a financial and business standpoint. But we just need, I need your authority to extend the closing for another 30 days. I've already been talking to Navarro's attorneys about that. They're amenable to doing it, but I didn't think I had the authority to do that on my own.
Does it, does it have to be limited to 30 days? Would you need more time? Or is that a standard request?
I, I don't think it's going to take more than that. I mean, we've already started the, the document preparation stuff. Right now, it's more a question of what's in the best interest of the city, whether to come up with the $12 million now, or to continue with the payments that are set forth in that agreement. And we'll have that for you by next meeting, and it's still within the 30 days. So.
Oh, yeah.
So we'll be there.
Okay.
I would just mention that we, maybe it's not for this discussion, but if we pay outright, then we'll collect the rent. We'll become the landlords, right?
That's right. If we, if we don't pay it off right now, we'll have those five payments, I said, starting in 2023. But Navarro continues to collect and keep the rent that's being paid by CVS for the, for the lease that's on the property. If we buy it out, we become the landlord. We accept the lease payments, you know, which are approximately $200,000 a year. So, so we want to, but we want to have the opportunity to look through and make sure the city has the finances available, and we'll work with, with the city manager.
You need the extension regardless, because there's no way, you can't.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll, right now, it's just, go ahead and extend it for 30 days, and I'm good to go.
I'm, I'm absolutely in favor of that extension.
Thank you.
And then we'll evaluate the, the payment terms.
Right.
No, just the direction.
Yeah. I don't need a motion, just the consensus is all I really need. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. All right, item 13. We have a, we're on 13, right?
Yes, ma'am.
To the bitter end. What time is it? Wow. Okay, Vladimir Silverstone, is there Vladimir, Vladimir Silverstone in the audience? I guess. Okay. Felix Kizner.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Commissioner. My name is Felix Kizner, 25174th Street. I want to bring something up. There's a lot of word about safety. Safety is the word of the night that's been used over and over. There's another safety that we have to be concerned with. And I don't know how much you guys are prepared, or how much from legal point of view, we can do much about. But to give you an example, we have a zoonatic disease, which is SARS-CoV-2. We all thought it would be gone. We all thought that that's it, you know, science is going to defeat it. But obviously, it's here, and we have Omicron. We've seen Florida, Florida, by the way, South Florida is in pretty good shape. We're one of the highest vaccination areas in Florida. And in Sunny Isles Beach, I believe a lot of people are vaccinated, thanks to your center right here, which makes it very, very effective and very convenient, as well as this new, this new variant, only with the booster shot is it proving to be effective. But it's still, vaccines are still protecting us. But I want to bring an example of something where sometimes you have to follow the science. For example, when we had the lockdown here, when everything was locked down, one of the biggest mistakes was made by the previous commission, is shutting down the parks and the beaches. If they would listen to science, that you can be outside fairly safely, instead of getting people inside and getting them more infected, opening up the parks, not having these alternate parks where they basically batched up a lot of kids together and a lot of parents, instead of opening, we have a lot of parks to have open. So you have to be prepared. We may experience a big spike. Why Omicron is dangerous, even though if you're vaccinated here, you know, there's 75% chance that you will not be severely ill, but you can get still sick. Three, four days, you can be knocked out in bed. And a lot of healthcare workers, we may be short on healthcare workers starting next year. So from the city point of view and commission point of view, I just want to recommend to you that you have some sort of a plan prepared, that if this thing's going to hit us hard, what is our plan? Are we going to keep the parks open? Are we going to keep the beaches open? What are we going to do if there's, if there's a shortage of staff, for example, in the city? People can get sick. We don't know where this Omicron's going yet. There's some positive news that it's not as severe, but yet, you can have police force apps at certain times. So just be prepared, have something out there. I don't know how much legal, again, we get a lot of things from CDC. I know the city gets the guidance from our state, from our governor, we get the guidance. But then the city, I believe, and the legal point says what we can do to protect our residents and be ready if this thing hits us hard. My name is Felix, and by the way, I'm on several commissions and clubhouse social media. I used to be pharmaceutical executive. I used to be director of pharmaceutical division international for Bristol Myers Squier, Merkin Company, also worked for an Italian company. But bottom line is, I'm very interested in this topic, and I want us to be safe and be ready if Omicron hits us hard. I'm done speaking. If you have any questions, I'll address them about this new variant.
Thank you. We, we've been actually talking about that, haven't we? We've been discussing that. There's definitely a, a concern about an uptick in the, so thankfully, we have the, we have our vaccination center.
Right now, there's a shortage on the Regeneron. Miami-Dade, right, Miami-Dade County is now, there's a waitlist of like three days to be able to go. And, and obviously, you need to get it as soon as possible. So the health department is a little bit concerned that if the spike continues to increase, we just won't have Regeneron available.
Yeah.
Stay safe.
Yeah. I, I'd like to comment something. Obviously, we, we go by what the state is doing in the county. And during the first outbreak and the lockdowns and everything, obviously, the beach and the parks, we're following county orders. So it was not the, the city that was closing down the beaches or the parks. So we're just following that. But regardless of that, you know, I represent the city with the Miami-Dade League of Cities, the Miami-Dade League of Cities, which is in close contact with, obviously, with Daniela Levin-Cava's office, and, and Jackson Memorial and everything. They're keeping a closed eye on, on what's going on, and, and hopefully, it will not get to that point. Like you said, some of the data from the Omicron, hopefully, is less severe. They're saying it's more contagious, but it's less severe. So hopefully, the impact will not be as negative, let's say. Yeah. But I, I will let you know whatever comes out of the county and all of that, definitely. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ari Steiger.
Ari Steiger, 262 Atlantic Island. Now that we hear that we have the best police in the, in the state of Florida from the city manager, and we all know it, this police is not running by himself. There's somebody leading this police in the city. What's going on with the contract for the chief? Is it just going to prolong more and more time? Can we make an end to it? If you don't want him as chief, just let him go. But I think we should do an end to it, because it's already, what, six, seven months, and there's no end to it. So please, make a decision, and keep Mike as the chief of police of Sunny Isles for the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Jody Joseph, you have two speaker cards for the, for this?
Jody Joseph, 18560 North Bay Road. I just, I don't know if you can answer it or not, but it's, it is regarding our police chief. And I'm, I know that we hired a headhunter, which I was 100% against, and a lot of people were against that. I think the fee was approximately $70,000. And I know we had discussed, there's very few officers here right now, but we have amazing men and women on our force. And I think the fact that we hired a headhunter to find other people, it was just, for some reason or other, Sunny Isles has no problem spending taxpayer money, and I don't think that was necessary. We have amazing men and women. And when we hired the headhunter, there was a list of 70 individuals who were qualified. And interesting enough, the 70 individuals came down to, I think there was five on the list, is that correct? Am I saying that? Is there five now? Five on the list, okay. And it's interesting, because we spoke to the headhunter, and people in our neighborhood, you know, gave some names. You're like Brandon, Brandon Eddy, Captain Brandon Eddy, nothing against you personally. It's just, we're trying to be fair and honest. And this list should not be based on race, gender, or religion. And the fact is that we know one person in particular, Lieutenant John Weish, who's always in our neighborhood, our, our people in Golden Shores are very, very familiar with him, and called, pardon me. And when we called the headhunter, he was very impressed. He said, wait, are you telling me that he was actually schooled in Quantico? That's FBI. I said, yes, he is, without a doubt. And I know that Captain Chief Snyder was as well. But not many people have the Quantico training, and he does. And somehow, we just, I had called him, and he said, oh, yeah, he's no longer on the list. And I said, well, how do you go from 70 people, when we spoke, you said that he's going to be on the top of the list because of his qualifications, qualifications. Besides that, he's also been with Sunny Isles, I think, over 20-something years? You've all been with Sunny Isles the same time, correct? Like over 20 years? Right. So just to keep things fair, a lot of things happen that there isn't a fair explanation. And I think people are owed answers, quite frankly. And we called him last week, and he said, I'll definitely get back to you in the beginning of this week. So I assumed, you know, we'd hear from him on Monday. It's going fast. Didn't hear from him Tuesday, waited, called Wednesday, and he said, oh, I'll definitely look into it. I said, you need to have his name, just in all fairness, back on the list. Called him all day, he won't return a phone call. Now, he said he took his name off the list for no reason. How does somebody do that that we paid $70,000 to, if I could just continue this? So I'm thinking, did he really take his name off the list, or did, was he ordered to have his name taken off the list? This is somebody we paid a lot of money to. And he said himself that he's one of the most qualified people. And again, we were hoping to have somebody from our force, Sunny Isles Beach, who I think we have the best force anywhere, period. I mean, there's wonderful policemen everywhere, but we're so grateful for SIB, men and women. And I still need to understand why he's not on that list. I'm not saying he should get the job, but I think he should have every opportunity that everyone else that qualifies has that opportunity. So we need to know why he was taken off the list. And again, his qualifications are far superior to a lot of people that are on the list. So I'd like an answer to that, if you don't mind. I don't know if anyone is aware that he was on the list, and he had Quantico training. He was one of the few that had Quantico training. And again, he's been with us for over 20 years. So, you know, if we could look into that and get him back on the list, and just be interviewed. He wasn't even interviewed. This is the shameful part. They just decided to knock him off the list. So this sounds more political to me, because it is definitely not his qualifications. So if we could look into that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
You filled out two speaker cards, so I guess there are another topic that you want to talk about?
Yeah, just, I guess it kind of goes back to what I was just saying. Everyone knows that there was a program, an autism program, that I suggested that we have. I don't know if anybody recalls the program that I was speaking about. You do. And it was before any program that anyone else suggested here. And sadly, it is kind of relevant to what I was just talking about with Lieutenant Weish, and how people get on lists and off lists, and their qualifications don't matter when they should. This was an excellent, excellent course. This woman has been doing this, and she's HOPSY approved. Anyone that knows HOPSY or is involved with autism knows her. She doesn't charge. She, all over Florida, does EMT, police, fire rescue, and it's a phenomenal program. Her son goes with her, he's nonverbal. And in the time of COVID, it's very important. I mean, you watch the news, and we were all speaking about it ourselves. People were depressed, people were doing drugs, people were running up and down the street, people that never had a problem, who could have been shot. And sadly, because it was just Jerry and myself who thought of this, this program was tossed under the rug, because it was more important to have the mayor and commissioner get the credit. And I just think that's absolutely wrong, because you're there to look out for the residents and the taxpayers, not what's best for a mayor and commissioners. And that's what, what happened 100%. And also, we're supposed to be looking out for our men and women, because had they taken that course, I think it could have been a raise for everybody, and it would have improved their resume as well. And this would have been back in April, and her course is superior, period. There's other courses which are wonderful, too, but they don't have a person with autism, and they charge you. But it's interesting to get this course in, to bump ours out, the course that was brought in, they always charge. They did it for free, and they brought somebody in, which they never did. They always just showed videos. So they knew they had to compete with Ms. Becerra's course and her son, again, who's nonverbal. He's been doing this, they travel all over for years. So I'm just trying to understand why our commissioner and mayors are not looking out for our residents and our police, and rather more concerned with who's getting the kudos for something, when I couldn't care less about that. Jerry and I could not care less. It was just a phenomenal program that I think everyone should have had. And you know what? The second program that went through the card would have been great. It would have been, it would have been the second program. So, I mean, we've got to think about these things, and I would like an answer as to why that even happened.
I, I don't know what happened, but I do think that it's a great suggestion. I'm a former exceptional student education teacher.
We should have had that back in April. But they, and I was talking to actually Chief Snyder, who knew about it. And it got hush-tushed, and then I spoke to, did we not speak about it?
Yeah, I would love to see, especially if it's for, if it's being done complimentary.
But I spoke to Chief Brandon Eddy about it as well. And nobody did anything, because somebody here had the power to pull it, because they wanted their program put through. And I'm sorry, but that's just honest from my heart. And I don't think that's the way.
That's the timing.
We, we have to trust our mayor and commissioners to do what's right for the people and our police. So please, let's look out for the residents from here on in. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
If I could just clarify that. Chief Snyder, whatever happened with him with the classes she represented, I don't know, but I could. I don't know, but I could tell you, I was given the name of this card program, which is the University of Miami and Nova Southeastern, both reputable colleges. When I started looking into it, I found out Sylvia Flores was also looking into it with her people, already had it scheduled. Vice Mayor Viscar did give me the name of this company. We called them. No, the commission, I could tell you, had no influence over who I picked. It was the only one I knew at the time. I did get this folder event from Lieutenant Weish. But at that point, Sylvia was already committed to using this company for her people and it didn't make sense to bring two different separate, or two separate companies in. Excuse me. So we went with the same company, had nothing but rave, rave reviews from all of our officers. They, the instructor that also has a child that's autistic. So, I mean, I think they're all working to the same, for the same purpose. It wasn't a matter of competition, who's gonna teach who. They were both free classes. I mean, they, it was, they did a great job. I would have no problem using them again, or I would have a problem looking at her company. But it definitely wasn't influenced by any commissioners or anybody else.
And the, uh, the card program.
The card program had actually done work with our department before, um, because I, I recall when I was on the CAC, I had recommended it to, to Chief Moss and he, he just took it and ran and he, I know he had provided some, some training to the, to the police department previously. So there is an existing relationship there with the department. And the card program, as far as I know, has, has never charged. Their, their services have always been free. And I, I saw the, 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 um, the postings online. I mean, it, it seemed like it was very well attended. You invited other departments.
And we had, sorry, we had one attend.
I mean, it looked like it was a good program.
Yeah. And it wasn't, like I said, it wasn't a competition of one or the other. They were both reputable. They were both good. Matter of fact, the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, a year or so ago, they mandated, um, some autism training to all officers now. It's part of their certification. And when they built the criteria, they opened it up to several of these instructors. And Bart Barter, the one that did ours, as well as the one Ms., um, Joseph was just representing. They were both part of that board that picked what the criteria was gonna be. So they're obviously both reputable, but like, I just wanted to clarify, there was no influence anywhere. I picked it and there was no discussion about it.
I'm, I'm glad that, that they got the training.
Yeah, they did. Like I said, a lot of departments from all over Dade County came to this. It, it was great. They did reviews at the end and they got nothing but rave reviews. So it was very, very informative.
Absolutely. But I was just thinking, that's true.
Thank you.
Mayor, I mean, the discussion is done, so we can move on to the next item.
Is that it? We're, we're.
That's all we have.
Public Citizens Forum, so we're, we can have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Short meeting. We'll be out of here in no time. Famous, they call that, where I come from, famous last words.
Thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all.